For Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Ottenberg, Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Jaxi, Councilmember Hopper, Councilmember Glauney.
Just a housekeeping item, I'm going to need the exit at 5:45 for a few minutes. Mayor Protem Giratano will manage the meeting for the few minutes while I'm out of the room. Appreciate your understanding of that. Going on to information items, I think we have 20 before we get to action items. Is there anything under information that any member of the council would like to discuss? Or about which you have questions, Councilmember Edens?
Yeah, it's just a brief question on the budget amendment. So on object number six, are we sure it's okay to decrease the cost and not spend right now on replacing the phone system? I was just thinking about how, you know, we all got an email that our phone systems aren't working as well and we're not pushing emails. So it's just.
So why don't we wait till our interim city administrator comes back for that question? Don't we forget it? Anyone else under information? All right, see none, that takes us to action items. And actually, there we are, Mr. Vinnich, planning in parks bill 2786.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, as you may recall, at the April meeting, a bill was presented for consideration. That bill was relating to the hard core area community park. After discussion, there was a decision made to postpone action and to see if the pickleball courts could be relocated to town center. As an update, I did talk with Mr. Cohen, who is proposing to install two pickleball courts as part of his project if approved by city council. And he is willing to consider additional pickleball courts at that location if the city would choose to pursue such. Thank you.
So what would the department's recommendation be on this?
Well, certainly, Mr. Mayor, I would like to see how tonight's public hearing regarding Mr. Green, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Greenberg's project proceeds. If it does get favorable action as part of the introduction of the bill, then I think it's incumbent on the city to start looking at how many pickleball courts can we locate at that particular site? We have four proposed in community park along with a tennis court that's convertible to half court basketball areas. And so I guess we need to do a little planning before we, I would say, jettison the proposal we have in community park.
Then it sounds to me like just procedurally, given that that's not going to, that issue won't happen until or be discussed until the actual main meeting of the council this evening, that unless there's a reason not to do it, this item will need to be back on the work session for next meeting after that occurs because we, only that way we will have the benefit of knowing.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we're having trouble with the internet. My apologies.
So we would still, okay, so we would still be.
Here's the internet's gonna be thrown.
That's all right. So we would still be within the parameters of that motion. So here. So, so hearing that, is everyone okay with this matter coming back at the June council meeting after we hear what happens tonight with the developing town center? Councilor McCutcheon, anything?
I, I just wanted to make the comment that before planning and zoning, the comment was made that the pickleball courts for the new development would actually be for the residents within that development, that there was a possibility that a resident could rent out a court, but it would only be up on the availability that no one in that development was actually utilizing them at that time. I think that's very pertinent.
It is, and that's something that I expect will be either hammered out and or discussed at the next council meeting when it comes back as to that issue. But thank you for making everyone aware of that again. Anything else on this side? Yes, Mr. Vinnich, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. Ms. McCutcheon is correct. The developer, Mr. Cohen, has talked about reserving one court for the residents of the development and having the other available on a appointment schedule. But certainly if the city were to partner and build additional courts, those would be open to the public and managed by the city. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Councilor Flasher.
Would the possibility of the basketball court and tennis court still be in the mix? Or would that not be something that's still an option if we decide to move there?
Mr. Flasher, I'd like to think that with a little bit of forethought, we might be able to make all of it work at that location. I don't know the exact layout of the property in terms of its topography and some of the other characteristics. But as I say, if the bill gets read tonight for the project itself, my intent would be to have some kind of sketch plan drawn up so you all, if the June meeting can see what might work or might not work, and certainly would help your decision-making process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so without objection, we'll have this on the agenda for the next council meeting. Consistent with what the council decided previously. Thanks for the update. Moving next to the increases, recommendation report and fee increases and event charges. Mr. Vinnich, are you handling this one as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, briefly, and then there are the three standing chairs of the council committees that could certainly add in where I might miss something or not cover a point of importance. As the memorandum mentions, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the program budget committee has been meeting for approximately two and a half to three years, had a total of eight meetings. The outcome of those meetings was a decision to move forward with fee increases almost across the board. And the reason being is that some of those fees that are assessed today in 2023 have not been changed since 1995. One of the key components that made that decision relatively straightforward was the fact that in calculating inflation over that 28-year period, costs have risen by 70%, all our fees have stayed the same. Also, as we've expanded review processes to ensure that stormwater management, grading, tree preservation and other items are carefully considered, the amount of time that city team members are spending has increased as well. So from that perspective, ultimately, the program budget committee thought the changes were reasonable and certainly necessary to address a new revenue stream or an increase in the current revenue stream. I would note that as an outcome of that discussion, some of the fees were not changed, those were the fees set by state statute. But anything within the purview of the city that was reasonable and necessary certainly was given a line-by-line analysis. To that end, tonight you have a table of items relating to those fees, the current amount of the fee and what is recommended in terms of its adjustment. Along with the fee analysis, the program budget committee also considered all of the major recreation events the city offers in any given year, most recently, let's just say, 2022. In that review process, the committee recommended that five events be removed. Those events were not necessarily removed just because we wanted to save money, but those were the ones that ultimately had probably some of the least participation and the cost didn't justify what the ultimate outcome was. Key amongst the committee's recommendations was the fact that all charges, fees or entry requirements be assessed if none is at this time, and that the existing structure be increased to reflect more so than anything true cost. And then finally, as a summary, after the program budget committee completed its task, we saw an increase of 76% in revenues and a decrease of 23% in expenditures. Again, all of that information is reflected on the second table provided as part of the memorandum. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll conclude and again, as well, as three of the chairs are members of the program budget committee, they may like to add more than I just provided. Thank you.
Couple of things, I don't have a grid or a table with my material. But while we're trying to find that, what, what is the, what is it that you would be looking for from the council this evening relative to this?
Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully request from the city council authorization for the city attorney, the finance manager, the interim city administrator and the department heads to proceed forward with the necessary legislation and steps to increase the fees as well as to memorialize the recreation event changes.
Okay, Councilmember Bartoni.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to move forward with the department's recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion to do exactly that. Seconded by Councilmember Dodwell, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor Dodwell?
I would just like to.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hey, the motion carries, so I guess we will see something on that at the next council meeting presumably. Let's go back without objection, while you were gone, City Administrator Lee, Councilmember Edens had a question relative to the budget. Councilor Eden, would you like to ask that again, please?
Sure, it was under object number six with the reduction where we had, I suppose, chosen not to spend on a new phone system. I was just wondering, since we've had trouble with the phone system recently, if we still want to do that.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Edens. Actually, very recently, this week, we are in discussion with our current phone vendor. Our phone system that we have now is a, you would call a legacy system. That means they no longer create the parts to properly maintain it. That being said, I've actually been able to identify within the budget, if we were to say upgrade to a cloud system that we're looking at right now and will be presented to council, we would be able to then cancel our provider that does our dial tone, which would effectively save us around $700 to $800 a month. So we would be able to get a new phone system that works properly and has all this functionality that we're looking for while also saving some money.
Okay, so that answers my question. You're not looking for an amendment tonight to make that work?
No amendment tonight, we'll have that on the June, June council agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving next on the agenda, champions of history, Mr. Vinnich.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no worries.
Went dead upstairs on me, so that's fine. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, approximately two years ago, under the recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, a memorial tribute program was created for individuals both here at city and those in the private sector that do outstanding work for historic preservation purposes. Ultimately, the city council expressed some reservations, but ultimately it was adopted and put into place. Over that period of a couple of years with COVID and all of the other things that were going on pandemic related, there wasn't much discussion. Unfortunately, a sad turn of events occurred and one of our members of the Historic Preservation Commission, Paul Wojcikowski, passed away. At the beginning of this year in January, one of the commission members, Dan Rauten, brought up the issue of recognizing Paul and the contributions he made. Ultimately, after discussion over the course of the two following meetings after January, a decision was made to make a recommendation to city council to proceed with acknowledging Paul as a champion of conservancy. And as part of that, there are expenditures associated by the city to achieve the outcome that's listed as part of their recognition process. And so tonight, the Historic Preservation Commission is respectfully requesting an endorsement of their action, and then the department will proceed forward with the items identified below in the memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Vinnich or a motion? Councilmember Dodwell?
Having known Paul for many years, having worked with him on several different committees, what a, what a wonderful citizen for the city of Wildwood and his contributions both personally and in the endeavors that he liked to enjoy, such as bike riding, et cetera. I, I think we would be remiss not to recognize him, and so I'll make a motion to do so.
Seconded by Councilmember Clark. Any discussion on the motion? See no discussion on the motion to proceed with this recognition as requested by the department. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That takes us to receipt and file PZ 10-23, Mr. Vinnich.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, under the zoning ordinance requirements relating to outdoor game courts, each one that is proposed and permitted must submit a plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for action. At this past Monday night's meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 1st, it approved a outdoor game court in, on a property that is located in the rural area of Wildwood, specifically Eagles Restaurant Court. The photographs that hopefully are provided as part of the report indicate what was believed by the Planning and Zoning Commission as an excellent application in this regard. If there are any questions regarding that matter, department, we'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Vinnich on this receipt and file item? All right, moving next to EZ 16-99 Sprint Spectrum.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, this is a telecommunications tower and equipment shelter located on the northeast corner of Clayton and Strecker roads. The tower and equipment shelter has been there for a number of years. As part of the action of city council to grant the conditional use permit for this particular activity, there is an annual review requirement. And so in this particular instance, the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission was twofold. First, the Planning and Zoning Commission did grant the annual extension, which will take it through May 2024. The owner of the tower requested that that annual inspection process be changed from one year to three at a minimum, up to five years. The department did not support such based upon an inspection that was conducted prior to the May 1st meeting. And what we found across the board with regards to telecommunications towers and their sites is that that annual review catches things before it gets too far along and certainly provides to our residences the assurance that our codes are being enforced. And even a monopole for telecommunications purposes can basically look as good as possible when it's in the city of Wildwood. So with that, the commission did not support that change. As with any conditional use permit, the city council has 15 days to exercise its power review if it should disagree with the action of the commission. And so with your receipt and filing tonight, an action would have to be taken, given that we will not meet in that 15-day period after tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vinnich. Any questions from any member of the council relative to this item? All right, so at this point, I'm gonna have to step out for just a few minutes. And Mr. Giratano, as Mayor Protem will be continuing the meeting. We do have one remaining receipt and file relating to reoccupancy permit. And that gives us time to discuss items on the agenda for the main meeting. And in order of priority to make that meeting flow more efficiently, I might suggest that the following four bills be discussed, actually one resolution and three bills. The first, I think, which will be the most important expedite, the meeting of the council would be a discussion of Resolution 202310, which is the resolution relating to our letter of intent with the, for waste management or waste handling of our city with Republic and another vendor. Second would be Bill 2791, the budget. Third would be Bill 2792, the large contract with West Contracting. And last, Bill 2796, which relates to the expenditure of $30,000, I believe, and change for the S and log cabin. There might be some questions on those, so. But feel free to do it as you wish. I just thought that those might be the most important to discuss in that order, and I'll be back in just a few minutes. And thank you, Councilmember Giratano.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I will refer back to Director of Planning regarding that last item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem and members of city council, the item that is the last of the receipt and files from the Planning and Zoning Commission relates to a discussion that's been ongoing with the members about a reoccupancy permit program for existing one and two sing, one and two family existing residences. The matter was brought up by one of the commission members, but it also happens to dovetail with a policy that is in the master plan that this type of reoccupancy permit program should be investigated and ultimately determine if suitable for the city of Wildwood or not. So tonight, the department is just providing you some background information that the commission has developed regarding its discussions. The commission did take action at their May meeting to authorize the department to prepare a draft recommendation for ultimate consideration by the city council. But again, tonight, this is just a stepping stone, so to speak, to that final recommendation that will be forwarded to the city council at the earliest in June, but more probably July of this year. So if there are any questions regarding any of the materials that are contained in the letter from the commission or the master plan component, Ms. Ripeto has been intergoling, developing the background information, so she is available as well as Mr. Newberry and I. Thank you.
Councilmember Jaxi.
All right, Councilmember Farmer. Yeah, so Mr. Vinnich, have we, have you guys thought about how, obviously, we thought, looked at numbers of price and things? Have we thought about logistically how this would actually work in the city? Like, who would do this inspection and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, we have. Part of the discussion, I'm gonna answer your question kind of in a general nature, then more specific. Part of the discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission was trying to understand what other municipalities around Wildwood provide this type of service? And if they do, what are the costs? And they generally range from a high in the city of Baldwin of $125 to around $75. One of the directions the department received from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to check with St. Louis County and see if this is a service, like our building inspections is a service that they would offer. Apparently, because they were just concerned about all of the logistics, the additional costs, and just trying to figure out if it would be even break, a break even for the city if there were an inspector or two added to, whether it be public works or planning.
All right, so I mean, my experience generally with a lot of these inspections, especially when there's a fire inspection as well, is there's often a timing issue in terms of one inspector will find one thing, they get that fixed, and then the other inspector comes out and finds something else. And it can throw off closings, it can be incredibly stressful for everybody involved. And at least in the experience I had of overseeing many thousands of real estate transactions over a number of years, I don't know that I ever actually saw any inspection that caught anything of like, really, this is a problem. So I guess my, my question is, if we're doing this as a revenue stream, I, I guess that makes sense. We need to come up with some revenue streams. But I'm not sure I am enamored with the idea of creating a hurdle just to do that. And also, if I remember right, you might know this, I think half the city requires a fire inspection and like the other half doesn't, so that throws a whole nother wrinkle into it.
You're correct on, there is an inspection process already, that's Metro West Fire Protection District, but we have two others, so the south half of the city doesn't benefit from a fire inspection. The north half doesn't benefit from a fire inspection, the center does, Metro West. And certainly, I don't see this as a revenue stream, and I really didn't feel that was the direction of the commission. And I don't see Mr. Bros, he's our liaison, but for the most part, it was just a recognition that some of the homes, those that were approved by St. Louis County in the late 70s and 80s are now starting to reach that period when they're 30 or 40 years old. And those are the times when, let's say, not major improvements are necessary, but certainly life safety items need to be checked and verified. And so from that perspective, we focus more on that. Certainly, if we choose, we could add a fee and have a revenue source from it. But I, I would like to think it had a, I would say, a more altruistic goal.
Hey, Councilmember Nine?
Normally, especially if a house is older, and again, like, it's been years of, it's many, I was not in a normal, if someday, they're paying to have, and they're finding these issues. They come in, like, they move through and like, they find anything where they find, they won't, because they feel like they have to. I, uh, also, if they do have a list of things that need to be repaired, out and the sellers are gonna get a lot of, they need additional.
Just consider the benefits or the, the, let's say, the consequences of a change. And I think if you would watch the video from the meeting where this was discussed last Monday, it's a mixed bag right now with the commission, many feel the same way as you do, that private inspections generally catch most of those life safety issues, just as a county inspector would or not.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so therefore, that concludes all the receiving file items here. So at this point right now, we'll open it up to see if there's any discussion on any of the items for tonight that we can have right now, so look to see if anyone wants to raise anything. All right, Councilmember Dodwell?
I know I'm everybody's pain in the side on this issue, but I, I've got a question. I read through the, the solar panel updates, et cetera. One of my major questions is on the, the type of panel, is the same type of panel required on the backside of the house as required on the front side of the house? Or are these stipulations that you've kind of summarized in your initial document here only for people who want to put something on the front side of their house and the types of panels they can use?
And Ms. Dodwell, I'll do my best to respond to your question, but I will acknowledge that the department received a great deal of help from Mr. Young and his staff of other attorneys when we were kind of working through possible changes. What I would interpret as part of this is that you could have two different types of solar panels on your home in the rear area or not visible from an abutting or joining road. It could be the traditional panels that we're seeing more and more, the black streamlined ones with a six-inch offset with the trigger guards around them. On the front, what we're saying generally, unless there's extenuating circumstances, which we expect to only occur up in the non-urban zoned areas of Wildwood, they have to be integrated, which will be different.
In my particular ward, we have several properties that are three acres or more. Those properties would like. Um, those properties would like to be able to put solar panels on the front of their house. But you're asking them now to go through more expense uh, at the current environment that we're in with solar panels. I don't uh, deny the fact that solar panels will be making changes. And as new technology comes out, the prices for the cool stuff goes down each time a new and better way to do things occurs. But um, we've just got some, from my perspective, we've got some inflexible ways of doing things unless I'm reading this wrong. Would an individual, say, in Westland Farms or Timber Ridge Estates or um, the Cambridge um, area be able to come be, would they just have to do a CUP and get approval from Planning and Zoning if they needed to put theirs in front? Because I'm looking out, as I've said before, my front door, and I'm seeing, one, two, three, about ten different roofs that I see from the backside of their houses. Are they going to be denied being able to put their solar panels on the back because I have to look at them?
Not necessarily. Again, the, the, the line share of the restriction relates to if it's visible from an abutting or adjoining street. And so from that perspective, we quite frankly, if it's on the rear of the home and not visible from the street, really haven't thought much about how the other neighbors or what the other neighbors are seeing, not the back of their home, the deck, the patio.
Yes, we have conditions around here, and what you may see from the street would be less impactful than what a neighbor may see from behind the building.
And some of those subdivisions you mentioned, those were done by St. Louis County, and they only have a fifteen foot rear yard setback. The city's now as a standard thirty foot, so thirty feet versus sixty, so it could be in close proximity. I will note that regardless of the ward, if a property is on non-urban resident district, as I interpret what we're proposing tonight, the department has the flexibility to look at the distance the homes is from, let's say, in linear feet from the roadway, the tree cover that's associated with it, the topography or grade, let's say it sits lower than the road, or it's so high that even and the angle of view would be so skewed because you sit low in the car and it's, it's, there's some flexibility there. What I will tell you is, none of the solar panels under the proposed regulations will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The appeal process now is to the Board of Adjustment. Yes, it's their circuit court is the final step in any appeal.
Counsel, so um, from that perspective, I'll just vote the way I want to vote.
Well, certainly, your thoughts are well presented, and they're the same thoughts in many regards that the commission had when we had the discussion. That there is an environmental benefit. No one on the commission took aside from that. They, there is a benefit. But at the root of all of this, and we kept coming back to it, was it's defined as an aesthetic issue for the most part. It doesn't look good on the front of the house, but looking good is just a step away from property maintenance. And what it all boils down to is we're trying to maintain property values. And one way to do that is to ensure that there's a consistent level of maintenance as well as application of additional what we consider accessory structures. But I appreciate your opinion.
And I I would just add, not speaking for or against necessarily, but there are a litany of things in our rules. Um, guns, firearms being one of them, that differ depending on whether you live on five acres, three acres or not, you know, I mean, so.
Yes, sir.
I think that has a little bit different reasoning behind it than the solar panels do, Mayor.
Fair enough. Councilmember Farmer.
Um, I guess since we're on the subject already, I don't know if this is Joe or John or I guess Jim, since Larry's not here. I'm maybe a little, I read some really interesting information about all the solar panel stuff that came over on Friday. It was exciting. Um, but I'm a little confused still as to what is the problem that we are actually trying to solve? Is it the process that either the city has to go through or the residents have to go through with the city to either have these approved or not approved? Or is it determining what the residents as a whole that aren't getting these are going to be looking at? I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around what we're trying to fix.
I think you've encapsulated two of the major issues. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not necessarily appreciate the position of having to make determinations on solar panels. A week, month in and month out. So from their side, the process was not working very well. From the homeowner's perspective, the process was just almost intolerable just because of its length. A CUP requires a public hearing, so it's at least four to five months before they actually would get an answer. So that's the first part. And yes, we did have a lot of people come um, to some of the hearings and speak against front-facing panels because they just feel that it deters or detracts from the subdivision's character. And I believe at one of the coffees with the mayor, we did kind of an informal poll. I was reminded of it today by one of the council members, and the, a majority of the, the attendees thought we were on the right, heading in the right direction to require integrated panels, but not necessarily treat the front the same as the side or rear.
And if I could to follow up, and again, not speaking for or against, um, so our CUP process up to this point utilized, as most of those processes do, certain criteria. One of them was approval of subdivision trustees, because they are the closest to the situation, and that seemed to make sense for us when we formed that policy several years ago. And uh, I think in the last year or so, uh, the law in Missouri has changed that eliminates subdivision trustees from having the ability to have that say. So that has laid it in the lap of the city. So I think that's added to the.
Right, but I think I guess maybe John, correct me if I'm wrong here. That rule is that HOAs are not able to determine whether solar panels can go on based on an aesthetic factor, right?
I believe it's more than just aesthetic. They just can't regulate them.
So I guess my thing, I guess maybe my question is regardless of whether it's the HOA trustees or the Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zoning or the City Department, I mean, somebody's got to be the people that I guess in some cases say you can't put these on. So somebody has to be the bad guy. So are we determining who the bad guy is?
If the current regulations proceed forward, it would be the Department of Planning and then the Board of Adjustment if there is an appeal process. Um, so we're shifting, so to speak, the process to, I think, to expedite it more so than what we're doing now. And certainly, I think from the standpoint of the commission, and I don't think they ever stated this kind of for the record, but I think they're, I think they understand that we've seen the panels, we've heard the conversations, and we know the direction they want us to go. So they're giving us that trust to make the right decision more times than not.
So then do we have any data on, I, it sounds like we're getting a lot of people putting solar panels up?
A whole lot.
How many people are using what we're asking them to use versus what we're telling them they can't?
Well, of late, we've been saying no to front-facing panels more so than yes. And the reason being is, is most of the applications have been more in the traditional subdivision areas where houses are obviously closer together and more visible from the street that provides access to the lot.
Well, so I guess my question is, like, if we're requiring people to only use a certain type of panel or whatever on the front of their house, but no one is currently using those panels. I assume there's a reason they aren't. My guess would be they're expensive.
They are expensive. They're somewhat more delicate in terms of damage from the weather. And I think more importantly, from what Mr. Newberry, Ms. Ripeto and I have heard, they're not as efficient generators of electricity as the more traditional panels. So you pay more and you get less.
So then, assuming we went forward with this, I guess I'm having a hard time justifying how this isn't an effective ban on these solar panels if nobody uses them because they're too expensive and they don't hold up to weather, of which we have pretty bad weather.
As Ms. Dodwell mentioned, when I can attest to the change in solar panels, when I saw the first set of solar panels here in the city of Wildwood, they were surrounded by silver banding, they were glaring, and they sat at an angle propped off the roof. We've gone so far, they're sleek, they're black, they're, everything is basically um, blended into a single color. So there have been, there has been many um, advancements made, and that's what I see with the integrated as well. Is there going to be a period where the integrated isn't as efficient or cost-effective? Probably. That's probably not going to be forever. And the hope would be is that as more and more people demand it, the manufacturers will provide it, and they'll catch up with us instead of us catching up with them.
All right. So then my last, I, I guess I'll quit beating this horse. So my last question would be, if we go with these integrated panels and they don't hold up very well in hailstorms or whatever stuff we have falling out of the sky on us at a day, and they break, what are our requirements to get them fixed so that the people that were very concerned about how they looked in the first place aren't looking at a bunch of busted up panels?
Well, first and foremost, we would hope that as with any situation relative to a weather damage to a home, that it's under the homeowner's coverage of an insurance company so that that can be a, a, addressed. I would also think that there's potentially some warranty benefit that may be able to be purchased or weather-related problems. But if at the end of the day, there's damage to the panels, the panels are, let's say, less than operative or causing to becoming, are becoming an ISO, or then unfortunately, it's probably a property maintenance issue that we'd have to address as, as delicately as we could.
Okay.
Anyone else on this issue? Uh, Councilmember Rambo.
Yes, and we'll talk about this a little bit later as well.
Well, um, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. So it'll, it, the bill is up for first reading, debate. There's nothing wrong, uh, I guess since the city attorney hasn't said anything with having this discussion here, but in the council meeting, uh, uh, that's a time for questions, uh, but not debate or amendments. That happens after a second reading.
Okay, sure, sure, sure. Yeah, fair enough. Uh, yeah.
I was going to mention that, but you just delved into it, so I thought I'd raise that now.
Jumped in. Um, the good news is this legislation does a pretty good job of addressing a lot of the what I think are mostly relatively modest concerns with the disposal, the safety, um, et cetera, of, of the panels. But um, it does, it really amounts to, as, as Joe was saying, a prohibition uh, on front-mounted panels just due to the high cost and the low efficiency of, of the offered options. Uh, they're a couple times the cost and about three quarters as efficient, and um, they're just not as durable. First hailstorm is going to take them out. The good news on that is it's just a sticker. You peel off the sticker and you put a new sticker on. Um, but um, I think the um, the integrated panels and the um, the um, um, mounted pan, building mounted panels, they're sort of blending, and the form factor of the, of the um, building mounted panels is shrinking as the efficiency grows. We've made some provisions in this legislation for um, only a rectangle or a square shape, no odd, single panel here, single panel there, you know, kinds of things, um, roof color, uh, anti-reflective coating and so on and so forth. And we've made the um, the traditional panels, I'll call them, much less obtrusive. And um, the aesthetic concerns are sort of counterbalanced by the folks who have keen interest in such an installation are willing to do it properly. And so my question, one of my questions is, what's the ratio of the pro versus the um, opposed? Because the documentation we saw, we saw seven hundred and twenty pages of documentation uh, that we got mostly on Friday. Um, five hundred of it um, was um, a bunch of studies from two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in Hawaii and Arizona and California, talking about the um, the uh, potential impacts on home values. And there was no conclusive evidence that it had any impact whatsoever. And the more recent studies that I've seen, sort of a preliminary look, are that it's um, it has a positive, generally has a positive impact on folks' home values. And so we have aesthetics on one hand. The folks, whatever their interest is, if it's personal, reducing their power um, consumption, or if it's um, environmental because they want to reduce the pollution, um, and, and so on and so forth, it's still, we don't have a good handle on um, on how many folks are in each camp, because the other two hundred page document that we got was chock full of, of comments, public comments that folks have made, and I assume that it's not only a representative representative sample, but I think it's probably every recent comment that we've gotten, and there seemed to be just my preliminary look at it. I didn't count them up, but I think there was a two to one or even a three to one ratio of folks that were um, more positive towards solar panels than were negative. And so um, given that the, the, the federal government is fully behind domestic manufacture of solar systems, um, installation of solar systems, and the state government, which is a whole different kind of government, um, they are also um, uh, it, fully in support of s- solar installations. And so that means it's not a blue-red issue. It's just a techno, it's a, it's a technical issue. And I think um, over time, we're likely to see more legislation that supports solar, and um, I'd rather not be behind that hour. So um, my, I guess my question would be, is there a way to just give more dis- it is one thing that would help, would be to give more discretion to the Planning Department um, and make it um, less common occurrence that it has to go through the CUP process to get a variance. And if we um, if we have a really good handle on how many people are actually opposed to the um, uh, panel installation on the front of homes based on aesthetics.
No, I'm not sure if the mayor's survey has anything relating to solar panels. But from the perspective of the department, as I say, it's kind of been a mixed bag at the meetings. There have been those that have been in adamant support, and there have been others of equally, um, I guess, enthusiasm against it. And so from the perspective of the department, I think the commission just had to basically kind of weigh through the pluses and minuses as voiced by the public and look at it from the perspective of the information being provided to it by the department, from the American Planning Association, from our city attorney, et cetera. And so I think they did the best they could with a very difficult subject. And it's not a subject that's standing still, as we know, Mrs. Dodwell's comments, your technology is continuing and improving it. And making it better. And so it's not like we're going to stand still here. Eventually, I think our regulations might. Like I said, they'll catch up with us and the integrated styles on the front of the homes may be everything we want them to be now.
And if I could, as a point of information, Councilmember Rambo, so, um, we did ask, uh. The, the department to do an extensive data search, research relative to. Claims about harming value or not harming value. And that data came back inconclusive in all directions.
Yeah, that was the five.
Right, it was. And you mentioned you have new data. Is that part of the council's packet that we've all seen?
No, 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 no.
Could you please show that? Could you give us a link or get that copied so we could all see?
To look at it, but there's, you know, I mean, just mainstream, uh, consumer sites like Zillow and so on and so forth. They're saying that it's, um, it increases property.
I mean, I was, I thought when you said that you had some sort of study or something.
Oh, no, no, I, I mean, there's, there's, um, there's increasing amounts of data. Um, about the property value question because it's been a hot button issue for a decade now. And so I don't have any, um, in my pocket, but I can certainly get them.
But yeah, I mean, any information we could have on that, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was looking more for local, um, opinion. Because the demographic in your mayor's coffee, um, is, um, is different. Maybe from the folks that come to a P and Z meeting and maybe from the folks here, et cetera, et cetera. So we don't have a good handle on it and we're trying to legislate based on, um, aesthetic concerns. Versus real tangible benefits to another subset of the population.
Councilmember Doddwell.
I just wanted to see, I was looking to see if we had in our new ordinance. Any information about when we are going to refresh this ordinance? Three years? Can we, can we add that in that?
You could add anything in at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that was part of the intent, um.
I think it would help if we had the ability to reevaluate sooner rather than later.
Just as point of information, we created the original regulations in two thousand fourteen, we updated them in two thousand eighteen. We did it once again in twenty twenty. So it seems to be on a cycle right now, just because we can't keep pace with the changes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, we have five minutes before we start the meeting. Um, I'm assuming while I was out that everyone was okay with resolution twenty twenty-three ten, the waste. Any, any issues on that anyone wants to discuss before we? Didn't come up. Okay. Does anyone want to discuss that? That seems like of the, the four items I mentioned, the, the biggest one.
Um, yeah.
And, and so just to expedite the discussion, uh, I mean. Chair, Admin PW Chair Garrettano, is there anything you want to share with the council relative to sort of how we got here with this that you think may be helpful or no?
Sure, I, I think, uh, and, and this was discussed at last Tuesday's Admin and Public Works Committee meeting. So, uh, we initiated a process with an RFP and, uh, we ended up rejecting the RFP results. And therefore ultimately came up with, uh, an option that is presented to you tonight. Uh, which, uh, diversifies the providers for the city. Um, also is something that we look for as a way to develop a long-term partnership. So that we can have a, uh, provider that serves our citizens in the best way, uh, for years to come. So, uh, quite a bit of discussion took place and that's what we have here tonight.
Okay. Any questions on the resolution?
I have a question.
Uh, Councilmember Roddenberg.
Um, is it my understanding that with the timing that we would need to observe in order to put. A new agreement in place that we would need to have a first and second reading tonight?
On which is it again? Oh, on the, the resolution?
Right.
No, the resolution, uh, great question. The resolution relates to, uh, a letter of intent. Uh, which is done to in transactions like this, that it embodies the main terms. Everyone agrees to that with the actual agreement to follow and the agreement would then follow with the June.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right. And I'm assuming no one has any questions about twenty-seven ninety-one relating to the budget, twenty-seven ninety-two West Contracting or twenty-seven ninety-six. Yes, I'm long cabinet. All right. So why don't we take about a three minute break? Uh, if someone wants to make a. Motion to adjourn the work session, made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Flasher. Uh, non-debatable motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn the work session, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So the work session is adjourned. We'll go into the main meeting at six thirty P M.
Oh, yeah, I had to do it there. It'll be on at ten. Junior. No, no, nothing to do with solar. You're a fool. I'm just a faulty family.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the meeting of the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. Elders, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Nian. Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Here.
Councilmember Flasher.
Here.
Councilmember Garrettano.
Here.
Councilmember Brost. Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino. Councilmember Jaxi. Councilmember Hopper.
Here.
Councilmember Galani.
Yeah.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see you. Thanks for being here. For those of you who are comfortably able, if you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, which extends one nation, not under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Minutes are on the consent agenda. Moving next to public participation, I have just few things I want to mention about that. Before we begin, public comment is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must indicate they would like to do that by completing a card and handing it to our city clerk here in the front of the room, or if you're with us by Zoom raising, using the raise hand feature. When your name is called, please state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official that you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions later after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. Finally, please be respectful in making your remarks to others. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And these things apply both to the public participation segment this evening as well as our public hearing segment later. And I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
The first speaker card is Vicky Robleski wishing to comment about Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash four.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity for me to be able to make comment. I'm Vicky Robleski, Ward One, and President of the Board representing the residents of Windsor Crest subdivision. We're located at Highway one hundred and one oh nine, and some of the residents are here with me tonight. In October two thousand and twenty-two, I contacted the City of Wildwood to get the legal document needed to transfer the alleys based on the ordinance passed in August of two thousand and twenty-one, when the updated plan, Town Center Plan was approved. I was referred to the policy on public dedication of streets and told that the Department of Public Works had to approve it, not City Council. That simple request has prompted a lot of discussion over the last few months. I may be naive, but after six months of comments and conversation, I am still not sure how an updated policy that originally did not address the alleys or the current subdivision structures through indentures is being presented to you tonight as for approval, as the changes that were made seem to be even more confusing. A lot of attention was put into new notification signage, also adding additional planning and zoning approval and council approval. But I just still don't see anything in regards to the subdivision structure that I can tell. I would appreciate if somebody can explain the Exhibit A additions, whether that be Mr. Vunich or Mr. Brown. We'd really appreciate it. There has been so much time being spent on this policy, and yet we're really no closer to addressing the promises that were made to accept the alleys and the ordinances that were passed in August of two thousand and twenty-one. I've noticed in the six months that I've been sitting at City Council meetings that Central Avenue was accepted for public dedication. The road, when I went up after the last meeting and looked at it, had no drainage. It doesn't meet either the old policy criteria or the proposed Exhibit A criteria that we're talking about. Yet that has already been approved for acceptance and funding for upgrades has been made. We hope that as you consider going forward, that you look at Windsor Crest in the same way when we submit our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Lou Salamone wishing to comment about deer management.
Thank you. Lou Salamone, I live in Baldwin, here to speak about the Wildwood Deer Management Plan, and I make a request to submit this document into public record for tonight's meeting. So it's a look into the future of the proposed plan. In the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, the Admin Public Works Committee will send a previous unaltered proposal to the City Council. The committee refused to accept a presentation from Suburban Bowhunters for deer management. Wildwood will pass the bill to hire white buffalo to sharpshoot deer. Public Works employees and a tentative newly hired consultant are burdened with the task of finding fifteen to twenty sites for bait stations just for the year one program. The law of diminishing returns applies to most base stations after round one of sharpshooting. Sharpshooting success mirrors Town and Country's previous ten-year program, whereby cost overruns and low adult female harvest complicate the success. Recruitment and birth rates replenish the population from the sixty-five percent survival rate of adult females from the inefficient sharpshooting program. Expenditures for an initial seven-year program will top one million dollars. Additional reduction needed in the early-stage areas and maintenance programs extend the program to twelve years and balloon the expenditures to one point five million. The Administration Public Works Committee missed an opportunity to hear a five-year plan for major deer reduction at a thirty percent expenditure of the estimated cost. Signed, Lou Salamone, Suburban Bowhunters, Nuisance Deer Control Group, dated today. Thank you.
Thank you.
All we could do at this point is offer free services to the city in the worst-hit area this fall to show the city that we're capable of doing effective deer reduction, and I would estimate that we could eliminate the a hundred deer, adult female deer easily in that period if given the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
I don't have any speaker cards for this session.
Okay, thank you. So so next is the State of the City address. Could you please, Ms. Eldridge, pass out that draft to the council? You might want to start with some of them over there. Right, so at this time every year, after the election, the mayor gives a brief set of remarks on the state of our city, and I am honored to do that tonight. The state of our city is solid. We have accomplished many things for our residents, from internet access to infrastructure and beautification improvements, all while maintaining balanced budgets. We have also resisted the temptation to take more of our residents' money by twice refusing to put the Wayfair Internet Tax before voters, and most recently, by refusing to apply the city's gross receipts tax to the large spire rate increase. Our town center is being transformed to a vibrant, economically successful destination, where several significant residential developments being proposed and the completion of the Village Green Area for community events and resident enjoyment. On a more fundamental basis, we as an elective body developed a five-year strategic plan based on extensive analysis. And for the first time, this plan contains a comprehensive logistical framework that will allow our residents and us to regularly measure performance. Let us never forget that we are one Wildwood community, and that while some of the issues we must tackle may not directly impact a particular ward or area of our city, they ultimately impact all of us. In two thousand and twenty-one, I called upon us to reach our goals with unprecedented, unprecedented integrity and professionalism. We have done that. And finally, although our city government continues to have resident approval, high resident approval, let us never forget that we must earn their approval each day with every action we take while occupying these seats that belong to them. Thank you. And next, we have a couple of proclamations. So Mister, I'm sorry, Doctor Diaz Grenados. There he is. You might want to hang this. All right, so tonight we're doing a proclamation in honor of his retirement. And when I do proclamations, I like to get background information on each honorary, because every life has a story, and he is no different. So if you'll just bear with me for a couple of minutes here, whereas Dr. Carlos Diaz Grenados has been involved in education administration since nineteen ninety-nine, when he started his service as Assistant Principal at the Brittany Woods Middle School in University City, Missouri. Whereas since that time, with the exception of three years, when he was a professor of graduate education, he has faithfully served students and school districts as a principal or assistant. Whereas Dr. Diaz Grenados's own education began at Webster University and culminated with obtaining his doctoral degree from the University of Missouri St. Louis in two thousand and fourteen. And whereas Dr. Diaz Grenados has served as principal at Pond Elementary School in Wildwood, Missouri for fifteen years. And whereas he is retiring from this field and represents the ideals and principles of the Wildwood, Missouri community. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that on this eighth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, the City of Wildwood hereby acknowledges the outstanding achievements of Dr. Carlos Diaz Grenados, and further, that the City of Wildwood hereby expresses its sincere thanks to him for being part of our city. Thank you so much. All right, and now we're going to honor several people that are with us this evening relating to our Route sixty-six corridor. You'll just bear with me for a moment. Whereas the City of Wildwood, Missouri deems it necessary and important to identify and preserve historical sites and local history within its boundary. Whereas the city's original Route sixty-six corridor is a defining asset established in nineteen twenty-six as a major connection to the West and affectionately known as the Main Street of America and the Mother Road, giving birth to many small towns, ends, mom-and-pop businesses, and other roadside attractions, all now being memorialized in pop culture. Whereas the Student Route sixty-six Task Force was born in June two thousand and twenty-two in partnership with Rockwood R six School District and under the umbrella of the Wildwood Historic Preservation Commission to encourage and support multi-generational engagement in the city's Route sixty-six revitalization initiative. Whereas the Task Force has since been instrumental to the planning and design of proposed Route sixty-six roadside park, the orchestration of a student-designed competition for the park, which was open to all area students, the filming of a Wildwood Route sixty-six selfie tour and virtual tour, and the planning and education of two themed events for the city's Route sixty-six month occurring throughout April, two thousand and twenty-three. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the City of Wildwood recognizes members Ruthie Central, Lily Gee, Sidney Shaw, Nolan Myers, Haley Cantrell, Ali Solomon, Lauren Dean, and Abigail Reg Hardman. Volunteer liaisons Roseanne Benson, Janice Stevens, Steve Scott, and Elizabeth Broyles, and collaborators Mary Laypack, Brian Reed, Jordan McCaughy, and David Morrison of the Rockwood R six School District for their outstanding service to our community. So if all of you please come up to the front. And if you want to just go on either side of me so we can get a picture with all of you. Okay, that takes us to unfinished business from the last meeting, second readings, and I just have a question. Would there be any objection on the part of the council to handling Bill twenty-seven eighty-seven, which relates to engineering agreement for our Center Avenue? And that affects Ward eight and Bill twenty-seven eighty-eight relating to another agreement with Horner and Schifrin for capital improvements in one vote? Would there be any objection to that? And and the second one affects, I'm sorry, Wards one and six. Everyone good with that? Okay, with that in mind, is there, Bill twenty-seven eighty-seven and twenty-seven eighty-eight are, before the council for final passage, may concern respectively Wards eight and one and six. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bills made by Councilmember Garrettano, seconded by Councilmember Clark? All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bills twenty-seven eighty-seven and twenty-seven eighty-eight.
Bill number twenty-seven eighty-seven, in ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a consultant service agreement with Drying Engineering Incorporated for the update of Center Avenue engineering plans and the preparation of bid specifications for its improvement to a town center area roadway standard, second reading. Bill number twenty-seven eighty-eight, in ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city consultant agreement with Horner and Schifrin Incorporated for surveying engineering and preparation of final design plans and specifications for a capital improvement project constructing left-turn lanes on State Route one hundred at the intersections of Boone's Lane, Manchester Road, Woodland Meadows Drive, Hinkin Road, and Wendy Hollow, Wendy Hollow Lane, Hawksworth Road, second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Vennett. Do you have anything you want to add relative to Bill twenty-seven eighty-seven?
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to answer any questions regarding the bill.
Any questions for Mr. Vennett relative to the bill? Mr. Brown, anything you want to mention relative to Bill twenty-seven eighty-eight?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I have nothing to add, but I'd be grateful for any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, any other questions or discussion on either of the two bills? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bills twenty-seven eighty-seven and twenty-seven eighty-eight.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian.
Yeah.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi. Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes. All right, the bills pass, and one sign will be in effect. That takes us to resolutions, and we have two. The first is Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash four. It's before the council and concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand and twenty-three dash four? Maybe Councilmember Ottenberg? Seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Ms. Eldridge, please read the resolution.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash four, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, amending the policy on public dedication of private streets to include alleys located within the town center area.
Okay, thank you. As you may recall, this is on the, was on the agenda previously, and it was deferred until this evening to give the city attorney time to develop something that would be more palatable to some of the speakers that we had. Councilmember Bartoni?
Thank you. Can, Joe, can you answer the one, and I apologize, I don't remember your name. She had our rec. The question that she had, it was something regarding the Exhibit A additions. Can we at least try to get an answer to her question?
City Attorney Young.
Thank you. So the changes that you'll see before you, as you'll recall, the prior policy, which is the current policy, requires a hundred percent execution of a petition for the dedication of any right of, before the City Council even consider the dedication. There was representatives from the Homeowners Association said, we want to recognize homeowner association authority to dedicate property. How we've accomplished that is to say there are two processes pursuant to which dedication may be made. The first process is by any legally authorized person who may dedicate property, which is something that's required of us. We have to have legal authority to dedicate to the property before the city can accept it. It's a conveyance of an interest in land. So we have to have that process, whether it's an HOA, whether it's potentially everybody in the subdivision, whether it's the HOA by vote. We don't know that until we look at it, just like any other conveyance property. However, consistent with the prior policy, we do have notice requirement. So if a three-member HOA decides to dedicate the entirety of private streets within a subdivision, we require you to provide notice to people in that subdivision on those streets. And if anyone objects to it, it triggers a minimum signature requirement. So if one person objects, it's seventy percent. If ten percent object, it's eighty percent. If, I believe it's twenty percent, it's ninety percent. Of the affected property owners have to sign a petition. That's still less, but it still allows that if nobody objects and the HOA just signs it and has the authority to do it, it's considered an appropriate petition. In terms of the question about the homeowner or the Planning and Zoning Commission process, that's statutorily required. So we've added it in there to add to the process that we've created, but it's already required by statute to go to P and Z first.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Garrettano.
Okay, thank you for the city administrator for providing this additional explanation. Just for clarity, when you say that, let's say in the case the HOA board wishes to dedicate the streets to the city, you said if there is at least one objection, then there is a triggered signature requirement. And could you just clarify, like, what do you mean by the seventy percent? Does that mean seventy percent of the neighborhood has to sign or seventy percent have to agree?
So as part of the process, they'll have to identify affected property owners. By way of example, if you've got a street and it's, it'd be people that are on that street. And they have to identify it, and the city has to confirm, yes, those are the affected property owners. It's part of the application process. And if one person objects to it in the form, in writing, to the Planning and Zoning Commission before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, then it would trigger a seventy percent signature requirement. So if one person objects, they've got to say, we've got seventy percent support for having this prob, this street dedicated.
So as long as seventy percent of the people on the street are in support and sign on, then that dedication can move forward.
Under that scenario, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Edens.
And I just really want to hone in on this. You're saying homeowners, not households. So if if more than one, like if it's a couple that's both on the title, two people can count towards that seventy percent rather than one, one vote per household, house.
It would be seventy percent of the identified affected properties. So it'd be representative of the properties.
Properties. So only really one person per.
Well, they have to be able to represent that property.
Can can represent and count towards that seventy percent. Okay, that's what I thought.
Councilor Farmer?
Does the HOA have to get seventy percent, or the person objecting to it have to get to seventy percent?
Whoever is requesting the dedication or the acceptance of the dedication. So in the scenario of an HOA application, it would be the HOA.
Okay, so like I'm a trustee in my association. In our indentures, it pretty clearly states that as a trust, the job of the trustees is to dedicate, you know, common ground, street, all that kind of stuff. So does this then supersede the indentures of each homeowners association?
Again, it has no relation to the indentures in terms of superseding or not, because the city's not obligated to do, to accept anything or even have this process. So the idea behind the percentage is that it's not inserting the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission in a dispute amongst neighbors with their homeowners association effectively.
Well, but if you, if we say then they have to get seventy percent, then the city is inserted in that. Because one neighbor can say they don't want to do it.
Currently, it's a hundred percent, so that there is certainly no dispute. So this actually lessens that requirement, and you do have that possibility, but it lessens it.
Okay, so then in the case of our residents that have come up here a number of times to talk about this, I'm assuming, because this is alleys in the back of their homes, this would then be one hundred percent as all homes are affected.
If it's a hundred percent of the, no, it wouldn't be a hundred percent. There's now no requirement for a hundred percent except under the current policy. So if the homeowners association does in fact have legal authority to dedicate the property, and there's no objections filed, that's it. The city may proceed.
But we, the city is obligating the HOA to notify a certain number of people that this is going on.
Correct. Correct. Simply by a letter.
Okay. And how long do the notifications take to be responded to, I guess?
The time within which they have to file the protest. I'm just confirming it. So the, the notice has to be fifteen days prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I guess maybe this, while you're looking this up, this is maybe a better way to, my concern. So I think it's probably fair to say that in most neighborhoods, there might be a resident or two that is just generally un- there might be a resident or two that is just generally unhappy with any decision that is made, regardless of who's making it or what it is. And so in doing that, we are inviting that person to immediately say, I have a problem with this and then put not an inexpensive procedure in place on an HOA that is generally designed and run by volunteers to then try to get seventy percent of people that in actuality don't care.
So I would say on, on the, in that regard, the current policy is a hundred percent. If there, so anybody, one person objects, it's dead on arrival. So if there's a different number, and again, we just came up with these numbers based on my experience and having something, a, a committee recommendation of a hundred percent. If the council decides they want to do some lesser percentage, you can certainly do that.
Like, I, I mean, I, I'm certain that we've done, we've talked about this a lot and I would certainly love to not talk about it anymore because I love you guys, but I've seen enough of you. Um, yeah, I'm sure you've seen enough of me. So I, I guess, uh, my real worry is, I mean, I, I can think off the top of my head of at least one resident.
So this lowers that threshold. Right now, if that's the case, it's a hundred percent.
I, right, but I guess I'm trying to s- I, I'm, maybe I'm trying to solve the, maybe I'm trying to solve the problem too much. That if you, I mean, we have a, for instance, we, you know, probably a lot of people are having corp- corporations come in and trying to buy blocks of homes in order to control HOAs and what is going on. And so I think it's maybe this is not the right venue or avenue on this particular bill to do this, but I mean, running an HOA is not fun and it's not easy and like, nobody tells you how to do it. So anything that we're doing like this where it's like, now send this thing. If I say, if I have to send a piece of mail to everyone in my neighborhood, it's like seven hundred dollars and my budget's not very big. So I, you know, so if we're trying to correct this idea that we don't want to have a, just somebody can say, I don't like this and then that's dead, I'm all for it. I guess I'm just wondering if what we're asking of these people then to do is an appropriate ask is if one person objects, it's seventy percent has to approve of it. I guess my, my thing would be if somebody wants to object to it, that's fine. They can go out and get seventy percent of signatures saying they don't want it. I don't understand why it's the other way around. That, is that a way to do that? So if I, if in my neighborhood, if I want to object to dedicating an alley, that is certainly my right as a homeowner. I can do that. But I guess I'm confused why one person can then sort of inconvenience an HOA to then try to go get seventy percent and like, I don't know about anybody else's neighborhood. I can't get, I can't talk to seventy percent of the people in my neighborhood. I don't even, like, they're never around. So I don't, I, I just am wondering if what we're doing is just creating another scenario where you're not able to meet a threshold because you can't get seventy percent of your homeowners to sign off on it.
And again, my, the intent of the legis, or the intent of the proposed revisions was to be relatively consistent with the recommendation of the Admin Public Works Committee and also just based on my experience and seeing what other cities have.
So no other cities have it where if somebody is objecting, it is their responsibility to get the homeowners to sign off on something.
Say that none do, but I do know of those that have it where it is the obligation of those requesting the dedication to get the signature.
Is there a legal reason that you think it wouldn't be appropriate to do it the other way?
No.
Okay.
Councilmember Edens?
Oh, co- wow, comment and question for Councilmember Farmer. I mean, what I'm thinking, you know, hearing these comments is it would just be easier to amend this from the floor. You know, that objections have to meet a threshold of a simple majority of the subdivision. Because, you know, most HOAs voting procedures are usually simple majority unless they're amending covenants, in which case it's a much higher threshold.
You're suggesting a majority, no matter how many.
Well, and like, it's most.
Just once, you're suggesting a majority, no matter how many people object to it, with this one, twenty or?
I, I think I am.
Okay. You want to make that as an amendment?
And.
Hold on.
Because let me, can I ask Councilmember Garitano what his comments are and then?
Well, I think the city, hold on. Think, take this in order. I think the city attorney wants to comment on your city attorney.
I, I, I know we've been talking about this in the context of an HOA, but I do want to bring up the point that the regular, or the policy goes beyond just traditional HOAs. So it's addressing properties impacted. So saying that it's a fifty percent of the HOA or properties within the HOA is it doesn't address the entirety of the city.
Perhaps wording would be properties impacted.
I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from. I'd have to wordsmith a little bit, but I do understand where you're coming from.
So I just sensed that this might be right for a motion to postpone to an admin public works because I'm, I think that we're gonna, yeah, given the questions, all of which are great, to the comments, which are also good. Uh, I have a thing, we're gonna end up doing committee work real quickly. And I don't know that there's an exigent situation requiring this be passed now. So if you agree with that, someone can make a motion to po, to, to refer this to, um, Administration Public Works and it would be handled there, uh, with our city attorney and maybe a more, uh, comprehensive approach that has these questions resolved by the time it gets here. Uh, Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion that we postponed it and.
It'd be a motion to refer.
Refer to the Admin and Public Works Committee.
Okay, so we have a motion reported M and P W, uh, with a report back.
I would say at the, uh, in.
Sixty days.
Um, I mean, ideally, I don't want to continue to kick the can down the road on.
Why don't you give yourself sixty and if you come back thirty, that's fine.
That's fair enough.
For sixties or a second to the motion to refer made by Councilor Dodwell. Any discussion on the motion to refer only? Seeing no discussion on the motion to refer, all in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to refer carries. Uh, moving next to, um, Resolution twenty twenty three dash eight. Uh, this one cannot be referred. Um, before the council and concerns all wards, um, is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash eight? Made by Councilmember Bartoni, seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg. Um, Ms. Eldridge, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash eight, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, certifying the results of the April fourth, twenty twenty three general municipal election.
Okay. Um, so this is a formality that we have to do after the election each year. Is there any discussion on the resolution? See, Councilmember Bartoni?
I don't have any discussion, but I'd like to make a comment regarding Councilmember Bertolino.
We're gonna do that in just a second.
Okay.
Um, all in favor, seeing no discussion, all in favor of Resolution twenty three, uh, the motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty three dash eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? So it is adopted and at this point, I mean, I was gonna do it, but if you want Councilmember Bartoni, go ahead.
So I just wanted, you know, when I first started on council, Ray Mann and Dave were probably two people I called the most and were the two mentors for me. And Dave definitely gonna miss your leadership and your knowledge. And most of all, we're gonna miss your common sense approach up here.
So that is for sure. And, um, for those of you who don't know, Dave has been, uh, very generous with his time through the years in service to the city of Wildwood and we would not be, uh, what we are today, uh, without him. And so I think it might be in order that we give Councilmember Bertolino a standing ovation. And I might just make a plug, um, a little ahead of time. Dave is obviously fully aware of how appointments work and I know where to find him. All right, uh, moving on to our consent agenda, uh, we have a couple of items, approval of minutes from the April tenth, twenty twenty three work session, regular meeting and the approval of expenditures, um, as the consent agenda goes, one motion to approve the consent agenda takes care of both of these. If there are no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, made by Councilmember Flasher. Is there a second? Made by Councilmember Jaxi. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Pushing care. It's just the square. Um, so for the view on the bench who were up. Please come forward.
First, I swear on my own.
Be.
And then all of the. Say that. They, they were ready. And the ordinance is a pause of the three hours. And basically, me myself.
Yes, and I think it would also be in order if we do, uh, standing ovation for each of them because the time that they sp- have spent and are going to spend, uh, and, and do terrific work for our city, I think that deserves it. All right, so, um, that takes us to, unless anyone has anything they want to mention or miscellaneous, um, doing adjournment of, uh, the way this works for all of you that haven't been here before. At this time of the year after the election, we, we have two sessions of our city council meeting after the work session. Um, this one with our, uh, the one that is, we're about to end with our outgoing council members or member, as the case may be. And then we start in a few minutes, uh, fresh with our new council member. So anything under miscellaneous before we go to adjournment? Right, seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, uh, made by Councilmember Hopper. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Flasher, non debatable motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we will take just a brief recess and I want to mention brief, uh, because typically, uh, this time is used for people to move chairs, um. And I just want to mention that for the first time, uh, in seven years as mayor, no one is moving chairs. And they're wondering what that means. All right, so we'll take a few minutes break and, uh, get our nameplate for, uh, uh, Councilmember Marshall set up and, uh, we'll start back here in just a couple of minutes. Everyone, I would like to call the order, the second session for the city council for the city of Wildwood for Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty three. Ms. Eldridge, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Bowen?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni? Councilmember Nian? Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Here.
Councilmember Rambo?
Here.
Councilmember Flasher?
Here.
Councilmember Garitano?
Here.
Councilmember Bros? Councilmember Edens?
Here.
Councilmember Ottenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall? Councilmember Jaxi? Councilmember Hopper?
Here.
Councilmember Galani?
All right, uh, welcome everyone. Uh, next on the item is, uh, agenda is public participation. We also have a couple of public hearings and I'm just gonna, we've had some new people come in, so I'm gonna read this again. It won't take me just a minute, uh, what I read earlier. Public comment is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must indicate they would like to do that by completing a card and handing it to the, uh, city clerk, uh, in the front, or if you're joining us remotely by ri, using the raise hand feature. Uh, when your name is called, please state your name and ward uh, to ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. There is a five minute time limitation and I will let you know uh, when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and it identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond, uh, to your questions after tonight's meeting and we may also post any responses on the city council page of our website. Finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. So, uh, for public participation, first speaker card, please.
Their first speaker card is Charles Barkum.
I just want to introduce myself. My name is Charles Barkum. I live at one one zero seven two Stonebridge Lane in Wunsfield. I am the president and managing member of Gateway Disposal. Tonight, we're talking about the solid waste. I just wanted to reassure everybody for the rural areas that we have all the capability and the know how. For anybody who doesn't know, I used to own a company called Meridian Waste. And we set those those rural routes up to run the little trucks up and down the streets. So we're very familiar with what what where the streets are, how you get down them and things like that. So this should go off pretty easily. I've got most of my little team back with me, so I just wanted to let everybody know on that, on that end of it, we are very, very capable of knowing exactly where the little routes are, little trucks need to go.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Trevor Wright.
Trevor Wright, Ward five. I'm here tonight to talk about Bill twenty seven ninety two, the resurfacing of the streets, especially in our Ward five. Just wanted to share our support. I also have a couple of our residents. I'm over at Evergreen Forest Court. I'm the president of the HOA there. And I just wanted to come here today, say we really support this bill. Looks really good. We're really excited to because we're our streets will be resurfaced. So we're really excited for that. And just wanted to ask you guys to do a second reading of that bill tonight so we can move that forward. And also, thank you to Dave, who's not here now, but thank you for representing us for all those years and especially Deborah as well. And we're excited to have Ed on board with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is David Creepy.
Thank you. I'm David Grape. My wife Christie, we reside at eighteen four thirty five Hincken Valley. And we'd like to propose a second reading of Bill twenty seven ninety five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers for public participation?
Um, no, the rest I have a public hearing, but I think there's one hand raised on Zoom.
We do.
Not sure what it's for.
Do you, you want to move him in and see if he wants to do speak now or during the public hearing? All right, Mr. Bobstock, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am, sir. Are you able to hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. And I just have a question. We have public participation that's ongoing right now. And then in a few minutes, we're going to have some public here, a public hearing on three items. Are you here to speak on those during the public hearing? Or did you want to speak on something else here at this point?
Sir, the what I'm here to discuss tonight is the proposed legislation affecting the installation of solar panels. That's one of the three items that you're referring to that I'm happy to wait.
Okay, that will be, that will be later. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so he's going to hang tight for just a moment. Next, mayor announcements and appointments. We actually have several appointments that we need to go through here. Uh, the first is the mayor pro tem. Uh, I believe we had one person, is that correct? Counselor Garitano expressed interest in continuing that capacity. City attorney, what is our process? My recollection is maybe that there need needs to be an opportunity for motions from the floor, or is that not the case?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, there is, in addition to those who have submitted their interest, there's nominations from the floor.
Okay, are there any nominations from the floor from Mayor Pro Tem? Councilmember Rambo.
I'd be happy to announce, uh, Mr. Garrett or nominate Mr. Garitano for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Right. So do we, I guess we need a motion. Yeah, so we're going to close the nominations and do we need a motion for this? So you're turning out or just about? I'm sorry.
Close them and call for the ball.
Okay, so all those in favor of Councilmember Garitano serving as mayor pro tem the next year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and then next, the council liaison to planning and zoning commission, I believe we had Councilor Bros indicated he wanted to continue. Is that correct? Anyone else? Are there any nominations from the floor? All right, seeing none, all in favor of Councilor Bros continuing that capacity, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next is mayor membership on planning and zoning commission. Just by way of background, under our rules, the mayor has the option at his or her election to sit as a voting member of the planning and zoning commission. And I will, this is on the agenda to let you know that I will be doing that going forward for the next year. Uh, next is council standing committee assignments. As you may have noticed, these did not change remarkably. So if there are any questions on those, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve the county, I'm sorry, the city council standing committee assignments as presented. Councilmember Ottenberg. So we have a motion to approve the committee, seconded by council member Farmer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing that all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Similarly, we have our council committee liaisons that I have made to historic preservation and to the architectural review board. And I'm going to continue on here and see if we can handle these in unison. Uh, we also have um, an appointment to the Board of Public Safety and from the council and also from the council to the Wildwood Celebration Commission. And you have documentation relative to my selections on those. If there are no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve those liaisons and committee members as presented. Councilmember Hopper makes the motion, seconded by council member Farmer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, finally, the Wildwood Celebration Commission appointee, I had planned to get that before you this evening. I will have it for June. I don't have it this evening, so we would, I would ask for a motion to postpone this to the June meeting. Councilmember Farmer makes a motion to postpone, seconded by council member Dodwell. Any discussion on the motion to postpone this appointment? Seeing that all in favor of the motion to postpone the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that takes us to public hearings. First is PZ sixteen dash twenty two. Uh, Ms. Elders, would you please read it?
PZ sixteen dash twenty two, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission. Care of Department of Planning, one six eight six zero Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero four zero. A request to review amendments to regulations and requirements contained in chapter four one five of the zoning ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri pertaining to roof mounted solar panels or other roof mounted solar energy systems within the residential zoning districts, our districts and the NU non urban residence district, including but not limited to their installation in a manor where they are visible from an adjoining or adjacent roadway and the procedures for their approval.
Mr. Vennett, anything you want to mention relative to PZ sixteen dash twenty two?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to summarize the letter of recommendation that's before the city council tonight. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the planning and zoning commission has completed its review of recommended changes to the regulations governing solar energy systems. Those regulations that are proposed along with the rationales for the changes are contained in their letter of recommendation. The process started with a public hearing, in fact, two public hearings that were held at the end of twenty twenty two that led to discussions over the course of the next three months that being January, February and March, and ultimately in April, a final action was taken. Principally, as we discussed at work session, there is an intent to require front facing panels, part of a solar system, to be those only allowed. Will occur more often than not in the NU zoned areas of the city. The proposed regulations also is discussed, discussed at work session will eliminate planning and zoning commission review and rest most of that review authority with the Department of Planning with any appeals relative to decisions of the Department of Planning or the Department of Planning needing assistance in interpretation to the Board of Adjustment. The department would conclude just by saying that there was none on the planning and zoning commission that did not recognize the environmental benefits of solar energy systems. Regardless of where portion of the dwelling's roof they were placed upon. But again, as has been mentioned, there are concerns about aesthetics and aesthetics are a very close friend to property values. And so from that perspective, the commission acted to all the most part, tried to integrate better front facing panels than and has been in the past. And with that, after public comment, the department will be available for any comments or questions regarding the commission's action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vennett, and I believe we have three speakers on this in attendance plus one online. First speaker card relative to PZ sixteen twenty two, please.
The first speaker card is John Liam.
So I'm John Lamb. I'm in Ward one. Um, and so I had solar panels on my roof for over a decade. And we had hail damage that didn't damage the solar panels, it damaged the roof. So we had to take them off as part of repairing the whole roof. Our insurance company is covering that. And when I put them up, the only, I don't remember the process because it was so innocuous as to be essentially unknowable to me. I think I submitted, I think I actually created the landscape plan or something and submitted that and I don't remember really hearing any questions from the city. I know they asked my HOA something and our HOA didn't have any rules against it. And it went up. And I haven't thought about it for twelve years. Um, it wasn't until I came down this last year when my utility bills have gone up a bunch. My wife's been commenting how much extra we're paying each month because we don't have our solar panels up. So I've been keenly aware of that for the, you know, for the last I guess it's going on like eleven months at this point of not having my solar panels up. I love solar panels. I like how they look. I'd like every one in my neighborhood to get them. I think my neighborhood looked nicer. I understand not everybody feels that way, though. And so it's been, so I was here last week talking with the planning group about, about my request. And it's been interesting hearing the discussions here. I had no idea this was such a controversial issue. And I feel really sympathetic for you guys doing your best to I mean, people like me who think they're awesome. I'm sure there's people that hate them. Uh, my father in law lives in a, well, they own a second home in a location in southern Utah where their HOA doesn't allow them to put solar panels up despite it being sunny constantly and almost no one actually living there. So they're running air conditioning all year long with you know, without solar panels. It's baffling. But I know how people there feel. They hate them. They hate the idea of solar panels up in their neighborhood. So um, again, that was my first exposure to the, the passion that people have about how horrible they think they are. Again, I, I just, I had no idea. I didn't realize this was such a thing. Because again, I just thought they looked great. When we first put them up, I had a couple neighbors come over and look at them because they couldn't otherwise see them. They're invisible in my property because I have woods behind my house. So no one could have seen them. We had them come over and look and every, everybody commented, of course, they're being polite, right? So everybody was commenting how nice they were. Who knows what they really thought, I guess. You wouldn't, I suppose you wouldn't go to your neighbor's house and tell them how ugly they were. Some people might maybe. Mine don't. And so in fact, when they came down, um, we got our HOA meeting two weeks, weeks ago and, and because I have a request for an exception to the policy, everyone's got flyers or emails and so forth. And people are asking me why I was putting more solar panels up. And I was like, no, 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 I'm switching them out. And I mean, no one knew they were down. So people didn't even realize that. So I, I think my property is an example of how it probably doesn't matter what the city's you know, preferences are around how solar panels look. No one can see them. And so I'm an example of someone who owns a property where whatever the rules that you guys come up with, probably going to be fine for me in my property. But if someone lived just a little bit around the corner from me, um, they might not be able to put solar panels up. Actually, that's not true. In my neighborhood, no one would care, but I could see someone living in a, you know, a different location and not being able to put them up and man, I've saved a ton of money with these things. Um, I mean, it's something like it's over a thousand dollars a year. They've been up for twelve years. I haven't thought about them. I've been banned extra money now. Um, my insurance company told me that my property value is higher because I have solar panels. The Zillow estimate says that my property values are higher because I have solar panels. It says on average it's, there's, they have some percentage, an average percentage that your home sells more if you have solar panel systems. Although interestingly, it doesn't seem to matter how big they are. Like if you have them at all, even if it's a tiny bit, they seem to increase the amount you can sell your home for. And I get it. I get why that'd be the case. It's lovely not having to pay that money. And again, I wish my neighbors all had them so I could walk out my front door and well, okay, I can see one house out my front door, but I'd love to go walk out the front door and look across the way at his south facing road, uh, south facing roof and see some beautiful panels. I'd love to have them in all different arrangements, not even just squares. I think they'd be cool if they had stairs.
So Mr. Lamb, how you're, you're five, how much more do you have?
I, I'm, I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Francis Bab.
Hello again, everyone. I'm Francis Bab at two thousand one Cursdale Court in Clarkson Valley. Um, have several brief points I want to make this evening. Number one is I was instrumental in the passage of the Solar Rights Bill here in the state of Missouri that prohibits HOAs from denying people solar panels. I worked ten years knocking on doors in the Capitol Building, telling my story to legislators and showing them pictures and newspaper articles of what I have been through. And eventually, after ten years worth of work, that was passed into law last summer and it was effective in January of this year. So it was a lot of work to get that accomplished. And the decision was made by both myself and the bill sponsors, of which there have been many bill sponsors during this ten year timeframe as well as the solar industry to exclude municipalities from that bill because we wanted to give homeowners at least some protections in the laws in Missouri, but other states have protections against HOAs as well as cities from denying solar or making unreasonable unfair restrictions concerning them that affect cost and quantity of energy being produced. So anyway, that's one thing, one point I want to make. My second point is two of my neighbors in the city of Wildwood do have solar. One has a conditional use permit. The other one got theirs before that process was installed. They are up the hill from me, so it's quite a steep incline to get to them and on their property, on one of the lady's property is two cell towers, maybe a little less than two hundred feet tall. One of them looks like a dead artificial tree and the other one looks like a smoke stack. And the one lady that whose panels I actually can see are black panels with silver frames with white back sheets with a really, really noticeable from my street, the street parallel to mine and the street perpendicular to mine, but not from any street that's in her neighboring area. Um, my, probably my last point that I want to make is I had a lot of problems with this solar bill because of its discriminatory nature that was previously brought up about this for people whose houses face the street, whose houses face the wrong way. And because, you know, houses go all different directions. He, Mayor Bowlin, you know, came up with, he has eliminated that concern for me. So instead of prohibiting only twenty five percent or more of the residents from having solar at all, what he's doing is expanding that and making almost everybody in the city not have a system that is affordable, produces good energy, lasts very long, or is a good return or investment. Basically, you have eliminated ugly pretty much in your entire city. So it'd be more accurate to write your law to say building applied photovoltaics, AKA solar panels. building applied photovoltaics, AKA solar panels, that anybody can see or is prohibited in the city of Wildwood. It would be more honest and more forthright. And if there were people like Mr. Lamb who did have a property, you know, that is invisible to people, make those people go get a variance. It would be just more honest and more forthright. So my last part of my point is tonight, we can celebrate, if this bill has a second reading and passes tonight, the elimination of ugly in the city of Wildwood. We can celebrate the death of solar energy in this city. We can, you know, be proud of the fact of what we've accomplished and be forthright about it and encourage our neighboring cities to do likewise. The the benefit in me changing my mind about being opposed to this ordinance is the fact it is so extreme, extreme, extreme.
Ms. Bab, you're at your five minutes.
That the the laws in the state of Missouri will change because of it.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Betsy Vanderhayden. Good evening, council members and Mayor Bolan. Betsy Vanderhayden, one six five six zero Birch Forest Drive. I've been a resident with my husband for almost twenty-six years on Birch Forest and been pretty engaged with this city and the council over the years, PNC. Also, just a recent solar user owner as well, and have totally enjoyed that and went through whatever processes there were at the time last year. And I, as engaged as I've been, I really, I really wasn't quite aware of the changes that were going on with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I guess I got wind of it around, I don't know, late, late fall perhaps. And at that point, that's when I got involved. I went to the January meeting and submitted some testimony and and have tried to stay involved. So I am concerned that the general population in Wildwood is really not aware of what is happening here in city council as far as solar regulations go. And so I feel like there needs to be a lot more input, a lot more output from the city that lets people know that this is going on. I know there there parameters, ways that you communicate with with the citizens. And Travis informed me of them this afternoon. But anyway, then I'm gonna go ahead and try to finish up with something I've written because it just keeps me on track. Planning tomorrow today has been the mantra for the city of Wildwood since its inception. Wildwood residents may want to know that proposed solar legislation will do just this, this legislation will do just the opposite. I would guess that most of our residents are really unaware of the public hearing this evening for PZ sixteen twenty-two. This is legislation by which the entire city will be impacted. And the impacts will be felt for many years to come. It would seem unfair to forward new highly restrictive solar regulations, even extreme as Ms. Bab said, without more input from the citizens of Wildwood. In two thousand twenty-three, Wildwood has an opportunity to lead as a municipality and show other communities that we understand the gravity of choosing best practices for a sustainable future. One of those best practices is electrification of our homes and businesses through renewable sources. Electrification should be a part of the future for planning tomorrow today. Has the planning department sought out and presented the solar policies of municipalities with far more reasonable regulations? As a council, you could be provided with a list of cities that could serve as a model for Wildwood. Starting in two thousand twenty-three, there are substantial incentives, both local and federal, for households to electrify their homes. Just today, my family received a five hundred fifty dollar rebate from Ameren for the installation of a heat pump water heater, which replaced our natural gas one. When we file our two thousand twenty-three taxes, we will take advantage of a thirty percent tax credit, making it quite affordable and very energy efficient. When rebates become available later in the year, we'll be replacing our gas top range with an induction stove. At that point, we will no longer have to pay spire for service. I brought my electric bill from this current one, seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. We gave electric back to Ameren. Honestly, they got, what was the, we gave them back sixty-one kilowatts for them to use for the grid to cover electric. And so my concern with PZ sixteen twenty-two is that solar projects will become inaccessible to many residents based on the location and the orientation of their properties as well as the cost. Additional requirements, such as all wiring associated with solar project, be rooted underground, are painted to complement the building, will add additional cost to the project. Many of the changes to our current code will discourage or outright prohibit citizens for taking actions.
Ms. Vanderhayden, you're at your five minutes.
Okay, just another paragraph.
How long is that paragraph?
That long. It'll take me twenty seconds. Prohibit citizens from taking actions to make our city and our world more sustainable. I know that Wildwood would would want to be viewed as environmentally friendly place to live, that we can support our community with smart, sustainable regulations and ordinances. I urge members of the city council to vote against sending PZ sixteen twenty-two to a second reading and request that the planning department research again and provide alternate social, solar legislation as found in solar-friendly communities in the St. Louis area. Thank you.
Thank you. So you want to move Mr. Baumstuck in? I think he was next. Right, Mr. Baumstuck?
Thank you very much. I would like to echo the sentiments that were just expressed in recommending that the board vote against a second reading of PZ sixteen twenty-two. If enacted, the effect of this legislation would be to make installing solar power ineffective, inefficient, and cost prohibitive. I am here tonight on behalf of my client, Tom Downey, who is a resident of Ward Two. Mr. Downey has conducted research regarding this issue and has been unable to locate or identify any firm local to the St. Louis area, any firm or company that is, who will install building integrated solar panels as would be required by the proposed legislation. The reliable research indicates that solar power increases the value of homes in general and it does not, in fact, lower them. Requiring the the use of building integrated solar panels is unnecessary for a number of reasons. One of which is that many panels can blend easily with existing roofs. They do not necessarily stand out depending upon the color of the roof and the material that is used in the solar panels themselves. For example, my client, Mr. Downey, has a black roof and my understanding is he has an application pending review by this council for the installation of solar panels, which would be in their entirety black in color. I do also want to echo, I believe her name is Ms. Bab's statement that the proposed legislation is in fact discriminatory. And that is because residents of Wildwood whose homes are pointed in the wrong direction would be prevented from enjoying the same rights as those whose homes happen to be pointed in the right direction. My understanding is that there are multiple homes in Wildwood that already have solar panels pointed towards the front. And what this provides not only savings, as noted by Mr. Lamb and by the speaker who immediately preceded me, but it also, it 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 also allows for, as the speaker, the previous speaker stated, the saving of energy and to such an extent that it can, in fact, be given back to Ameren instead of, instead of continuing to harm the environment unnecessarily. So as stated, as I understand the matter, my client, Tom Downey, has an application pending review by this council. I would encourage the council to vote against a second reading of PZ sixteen dash twenty-two. I would thank the council very much and thank everyone in attendance for your time and patience this evening as I've made my statements. And should the council decide to vote on my client's application, you'll never need to hear from me on this matter again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think, so we don't have any more speaker cards on this in person. And I think the next speaker remotely was Mr. Jonathan Dolan. We could move him in.
Good evening. Do I have camera and audio?
You do. If you could just state your name and residence and then proceed. I guess you heard Mr. Dolan, the items I mentioned about our public participation earlier, assuming?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for allowing this hearing to go on at such a busy meeting and welcome to the new council people. And thank you all for your service. My name is John Dolan. I'm an executive director for the Missouri Solar Energy Industry Association. And to those of you who may know, or Jonathan Dolan, I should say, for the record. For those of you may know, we provided some useful and productive testimony and respectful testimony for PNC back in December. Unfortunately, we had very little engagement since then, but we did send a company to talk about some of the things we agree with the testimony of those there tonight, and we submitted online through your portal comments and suggestions, as is recommended. But sadly, you know, as you may or may not be aware, the comments that are there tonight reflect a real process failure, in my opinion. And what has occurred is that we have a de facto ban of solar coming in the city of Wildwood. Regrettably, Mayor Bolan has taken his opposition to solar as promotion of the disinformation regarding it and a decision based on the most strict approach or aesthetically driven approach against homeowners' rights and for homesthetics to this extreme action. You've literally had a nationally very strict but fair current policy that's probably one of the best I've ever read, read. But instead, you know, we're going through this process and it what amounts to a de facto ban because of the other witnesses and what they've stated. The way a house faces, the interpretation of front-facing being side-facing, backspacing, anybody who can see anything. And it seems to have even included somebody instructing staff to, you know, make it that way and create in the city an overwhelming majority of what will be seen by the street and largely prohibited by the new ordinance. The use and abuse of the definition of front-facing will allow massive denials. The exercise in detailing how integrated systems should work is unique, but it's wholly unrealistic as representatives of companies that are my members have shown. Such systems will not be pursued by over ninety percent, if not ninety-nine in Wildwood, largely because they're applicable to current construction and on commercial or mansion level. And home applications of the greats homes in the beautiful Wildwood are large to medium and just would never have home integration unless they're brand-new homes with a lot more money than you could ever get in those excellently reduced electric bills that were talked about earlier. The cost-value ratio is just not there, and a company has stated on the record that the talk of the lobbying and bullying about PNC council members, the fantasy of integrated systems, the misinformation about solar, hey, it's hardball. I get it. Not my first rodeo. But all should see it's a terrible loss that these issues cannot be more fairly dealt with for all parties. What should not be accepted or abided, though, is the unethical postponement of a decision on approximately nine solar energy applications before you that should be decided under the past rules. I don't know where, and I may be wrong legally, how that can be done, and it certainly should be. You should pass those that got before you under the rules that are in play at the time, and you're not doing that as well. That's highly illustrative of the unfairness of the process. Hey, look, I'm a former state senator from a neighboring community right across the river from you. I've been in Jeff City as a trade association executive. I've seen and I've expressed and I certainly appreciate your service, all each and every one of you. It's harder than what anybody else does. But I've also seen enough in my many years to know what I'm looking at. And I encourage each of you, especially those that may not know about this, to vote against or delay the vote on an unwise and an unfair policy that your community just doesn't want, that reflects the worst of the process of governance, transparency, and fairness. Through no disrespect to the outstanding staff you have, one of the best I've ever seen and the best conditionally used permitting process, but it's just not reasonable here. So with campaign signs, flag flying, satellite dishes, and the aforementioned cell towers, this will go down about what is the right type, color, proper installation of panels. Where is the real issue? And it's certainly not going to reduce home values. And you're gonna have litigation on this. I know it's coming. We will do a friend of the court brief. We very likely will see a reasonable policy in many of the other jurisdictions, other cities like Ladoo have already called about how they cannot make the mistakes that you're making. So we really want to just inform you that we're here, we're ready. We didn't get any callbacks. I know I'm not a citizen of Wildwood. I think your community is amazing. And I think it would stay that way if you were a lot more fair and you took a lot more time on this. Thank you for your time and your service. I'm sorry that it's come to this. I don't see the popular support for it. I'd love for you to take it slower. And if we can appropriately, with or without forum in the right setting, have a work session or a better hearing, it would be most appreciative. Meantime, the Missouri Solar Energy Industry Association appreciates any consideration and your fair and effective policy that you currently have. So we would recommend opposition to the new one. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Scott was next. If you could move him in.
Hello, can you hear and see me just fine?
We can hear you. We cannot see you, but you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you for your time. My name is Glenn Scott. I live at one six two four five Windcrest Ridge Court. I'm here to talk about PZ sixteen, I forget the, the PZ on solar. I want to put some numbers.
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott, did you state your name and ward?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ward Two. My name is Glenn Scott, Ward Two.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I wanted to talk some more numbers on on just what the impact of this bill would be. Rooftop solar usually only makes economic sense if it generates enough power to offset your electric bill. This is due to the five to fifteen thousand dollar cost for several different professional engineers to design the system and submit that design for approval to several different governing bodies. The cost of that design and approval submissions doesn't change much whether you have a system that generates enough to offset twenty dollars a month or your entire bill. This is why most systems try to be sized for an amount that would offset the entire electric bill. The new bill would require building integrated solar for all roof faces. I think that's been well documented here that the greatest majority of residents in Wildwood would not qualify for rooftop solar anymore. They would be required to have building integrated solar. What's the problem with building integrated solar instead of rooftop? Well, several of the options listed by planning and zoning for building integrated solar just are not on the market yet. You will notice there's no examples or of these being actually installed in place in a great number of locations in the St. Louis area. And that's because most of them are just not even available yet. The exception to that is the shingle-type rooftop solar. There's two There's two manufacturers for those currently Tesla and GAF manufacture rooftop solar. The problem with these is they're two to five times more expensive to install than rooftop solar. This means that a fifty to a hundred thousand dollar solar installation now becomes a two to three hundred thousand dollar solar installation. So think about, you know, as you sit here, think about what your personal electric bill is. Think how many months it would take to get a payback on your electric bills being if they were reduced to zero before you would get two to three hundred thousand dollars in savings from your electric bill. That takes a rooftop payment, a rooftop solar payback time of ten to twenty years. And it pushes it to thirty to sixty years. Almost, you know, longer than most people's lifetimes, once they are old enough to become homeowners. So building integrated just does not make financial sense. And that's why this bill is a a de facto ban. I don't believe there is public support for it, but I do believe if the mayor and the council disagree and they do believe there is public support for a de facto ban on solar in Wildwood, that they should be calling this a ban on solar in Wildwood instead of selling it as a way to make solar installation more easy. This does not make solar installation more easy for the greatest number of people. Therefore, I'm going to echo what others have said. This bill and legislation as it's currently written needs to not be adopted. You need to go back to the drawing board and rewrite it in such a way that it can get conditional. Have a process that doesn't require conditional use permits, but that is very clear and easy to accommodate for people seeking rooftop solar. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think next was Mr. Barber.
Hello, Council, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. I was invited here under the guidance of Ms. Vanderheiden. I am the owner of the company that helped her install her solar. And I wanted to give you the the standpoint of myself being in the industry for the last ten to fifteen years. I would like to echo the sentiments of Ms. Vanderheiden about the today, the tomorrow of today. Where is technology going? I can tell you because I I deal with this very closely. You know, with the electric vehicles coming and being able to backfeed the grid, you are now being able to have a electric vehicle that is a backup generator for your home with a way of powering your home being generated on site. So I know that has not been brought up to the council today, but as we are looking at electric vehicles moving forward into tomorrow, this needs to be considered because essentially you are getting rid of a fuel choice for moving your vehicle down the road as well as the points that they have brought up of saving energy and things like that. I would also like to bring up the fact that they there was no environmental benefits to solar power. If we continue to let the monopoly that is Ameren operate that laggity power plant that's not more than a wind draft away from you. I am sure that many of your children within your town have exhibited signs of asthma that are probably attributed to the coal ash that is coming directly from that plant. Not that you guys have any plans of creating electricity in Wildwood and I really hope that you don't think that there is zero environmental benefit because there are many studies that show the environmental mental benefits as well as the other mentioned added property values. And I have taught many programs to the St. Louis Realtors Association about the appreciation of value in solar, because there is a lot of misinformation out there. And I believe that this bill itself is misguided. And the other thing that I would like to bring up is I also am a trainer for St. Louis Community College. You notice I've got some equations behind me as they are adding more solar training programs here in St. Louis. And if you are closing the door, which is exactly what is happening on the solar industry, then that is going to leave people that are looking for one of the fastest growing careers unable to find that within the community. So I'm not looking for you to change your minds. I'm just looking, making, hoping that you're listening to the repeated suggestions of your constituents and the businesses behind them, the organizations behind them because they are making a resounding sound that this is not to the benefit of the consumer. This is not to the benefit of the people of Wildwood. And when I helped Ms. Vanderheiden with her solar on her house, I was really surprised to begin with that Wildwood didn't have the the door swung wide open to the solar industry because it seems to resound the idea of nature, the idea of a clean clean city of which there are many. So it was, it did come as a sheer shock to to me to hear this. And I hope that you are listening to the resounding messages that are coming to you to make sure that you are under the understanding of what you are doing, which is indeed banning solar. So I would like to continue to do business in and around Wildwood. I have many, many people in that area that are interested in solar. So please take a second thought before you vote on voting this down. And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, you all.
Thank you. Please move Mr. Rubenstein in.
Good evening. Can you hear and see me?
And go ahead, Mr. Rubenstein.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, appreciate your time this evening. My name is Jeremy Rubenstein. I live in Ward seven three, one, eight Harbor Point Drive near Lake Chesterfield. I also represent and work for EFS Energy, which is a local solar company here. That isn't the intent this evening. It's more to address and echo, as others have said and stated. Ms. Bab, Mr. Barber, certainly Mr. Dolan, has a ton of experience in this area. This is let's face it, guys, this is a ban. That is what is happening here. And I think that living in Wildwood has been my one of my family's, just one of the best ideas we've ever, we've ever really jumped on. Community is great. I think you guys do a wonderful job on the council. Mr. Mayor, I think you're doing a great job. We follow what y'all are doing very closely. And one of the things that I think is so important about our community is that green aspect. I mean, the symbols of Wildwood in green. The whole idea here is the irradiance and the way that sun hits homes, as people have stated. In the northern hemisphere, the south is where it's going to get hit hardest. And because and by which orientations of homes vary and usage varies and all these things. What we're saying in Wildwood is that we're more interested in a unified not no panels because they're more, it's more of an attractive environment. You know, then affording our citizens, our folks, you know, the ability to save money. One piece that has not been mentioned here is the fact that a lot of us live within Ameren territory. Ameren happens to be a utility that offers full rate net metering. This is a very important piece to this equation because a lot of other areas and co-ops do not. So for people who are looking to really do well and do good by the earth, by investing in solar, this is a critical, critical piece by which they save money is taking advantage of this particular aspect. I see a lot of EV cars around here, you know, the chargers, that kind of thing was just mentioned. We're eliminating your gas bill. We're eliminating the electric that it's going to take to run your vehicles. I mean, I'm not exactly sure why the city is so adamant about it, but again, it's not a maybe sort of it needs to be here and there. This is a ban. You guys aren't interested in in limiting the areas. This is a total and complete ban. Now, I'm more of a solution oriented type of person. Anybody can complain about things. And I do want to put out there that I'm happy to in any way, shape or form assist, discuss with the council, Mr. Mayor, with yourself, anything that we can do to try to put a little bit more thought and emphasis into some of the positives that solar brings as opposed to trying to eliminate it completely. I think having resources all over the place is effective. It's good. We've been around for about twelve, almost thirteen years, well versed in in the industry, have been out here to talk to a lot of people who are interested, but this is really not not a good thing that you guys are doing, but I am here and would love to help with that. I appreciate your time. I hope you guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that concludes the speakers on this topic. Moving next to PZ twenty dash twenty-two, Ms. Elders, would you please read it?
PZ twenty dash twenty-two Greenberg Development Company LLC, PO Box four, eight, six, Wildwood, Missouri, six, three, zero, three, eight. A request for the modification of the town center regulating plan for a four point six acre tract of land that is currently designated by it as workplace district to the neighborhood general district to accommodate its use for a maximum of eleven single family detached dwellings on individual lots and associated parking areas. Street address one, six, seven, nine, five Manchester Road, St. Louis County locator numbers two, four, V, six, three, zero, three, one, two. Northwest corner of Manchester Road and Taylor Road intersection.
Thank you. Before we move forward, as I just want to mention, I just noticed there's been some emails come in on the last item along with ones we got today. So you may want to check that if you haven't seen those. Okay, now back to PZ twenty dash twenty-two, Mr. Vennich, anything you'd like to mention relative to this item?
Again, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, the department would just like to summarize that portion of the letter of recommendation prepared by the commission. In this particular instance, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, PZ twenty dash twenty-two is a request to change the regulating plan of the town center plan to accommodate more so than anything, the single family detached dwellings on individual lots that form the southernmost portion of the overall tract of land. The current designation is workplace district, which was intended to accommodate commercial utilization of that particular corner of Taylor Road and Manchester Road. As the project was proceeding forward, it became apparent that many individuals and property owners on the south side of Manchester Road expressed concerns about commercialization of that particular quadrant of the intersection. And that in the with the intensification and approach needed to be considered that would basically transition from the more dense and intense residential to a more less dense and less intense residential. The Planning and Zoning Commission did grant the change to the regulating plan. And tonight it is before you for consideration. Typically, this involves the preparation of a resolution endorsing the change and then ratified. If there are any questions after public comment, the department would be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. First speaker card, please.
The first speaker card is Edward Cone.
Mayor, City Council, members of staff, citizens of Wildwood. My name is Edward Cone. I'm the managing member of Greenberg Development Company LLC, Ward three, Wildwood, Missouri. I first would like to make a request for the passage of Bill seven, nine, eight, adopting the rezoning and conditional use permit and regulating plan. The reason for this is to stay ahead of any possible adverse changes in the marketplace. What we're proposing, what we believe is a well thought out transition in the town center from the residential to a more dense development that will include luxury market rate apartment buildings. When I talk about luxury apartment buildings, there's a lot of things that people say, what's a luxury apartment build? Well, well, to begin with, a luxury market rate apartment building is one where you don't walk up to three flights of stairs to get to your unit. You take an elevator to a conditioned corridor and walk to your front door. The other aspects of a luxury market rate apartment will also include a lot of amenities. A dog park, which you don't find in many of these locations, swimming pool, rooftop terrace. There will be pickleball courts also allowed in in our development. Basically, that's it. Of course, there will be a retail component fronting on Main Street. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is George Stock.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is George Stock with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Greenberg Development. I'll just give a brief presentation. And this really relates to both PZ twenty twenty-two and PZ twenty-one, twenty-two. I'll just do it one time, run through it. The regulating plan is PZ twenty twenty-two requests the change and the other is to amend the C eight ordinance. As Mr. Greenberg described, the the property itself is approximately nine point eight five acres on the west side of Taylor and south of Main Street and then two point one acres on the east side. Currently, it's three lots on the west side with a portion of East Gate Lane dedicated as public right of way. The intent is to develop this into two residential buildings, mixed use, including commercial space on the first floor. The west building is intended to be a four story building with the first floor being commercial. The east building is intended to be a five story building facing Main Street. And then as it goes south along Taylor Road, step down to four stories. It's all surface parking, both on the south side of West, the west building. Surface parking on the south side of the east building. We're also taking advantage of the main street parking, the Taylor Road parking, as well as parking on the east portion where the two pickleball courts are proposed. There's also eleven single family residential homes, which would be fronting Manchester Road and Taylor Road. Those homes would be serviced off the Public Street East Gate, which shown in this configuration would be extended from Main Street south, looping down along the west property line and then tying back out into Taylor Road. Integrated within this plan are amenities. There's a pool, there's a dog park, there's indoor fitness center. There's approximately twenty-two thousand square feet of commercial space between the two buildings on the first floor, of which nine thousand will be retail. There's stormwater management facilities that are incorporated within the plan. All utilities currently serve the the property. Relative to the landscape plan, as you can see, the alignment of the street trees along East Gate and then integration of landscaping within the development for a total of one hundred and fifty-seven new canopy trees, twenty-five ornamental trees and fifty-four evergreen trees. These are the renderings of the buildings. They're predominantly brick with some hardy board integrated within them. The what's elevations that's shown here is the west building. So this is looking from the south side. If you're in the surface parking lot looking north, you see the four stories, the commercial space on the first floor, three stories of residential. You then have the west elevation, which is adjacent to the B and B Theater. You then have the Main Street elevation, standing on Main Street, looking to the south. Again, you have the first floor retail. There's patios on both sides, outdoor patios on both sides of the building. And then the east elevation, which faces East Gate. This is the larger building. This is the west building. As I mentioned, it's comprised of a five story component which fronts Main Street. Again, one story of commercial, four stories of residential. And then all of you are familiar with Taylor. It slopes down from Main Street down to Manchester Road. So the building steps down. It's four stories. Again, one hundred and eighty-nine residential units, one hundred and one two bedroom and eighty, I'm sorry, one hundred and one one bedroom and eighty-eight two bedroom. and eighty, I'm sorry, a hundred and one one bedroom and eighty-eight two bedroom. This is a view from Main Street, East Gate. And these are a couple of bird's eye views. So the top left is looking from looking southwest, looking down on the intersection. Uh, you see the uh E-shaped building. That's the um western building. And then just to the right of it is the east building, the four story. If there's somewhat self-explanatory, just the perspectives of how it fits onto the site. Again, some street view perspectives of the proposed building. So top left is standing basically in the Dearburg's entrance, looking back to the southwest, the corner of Taylor and Main Street. There was a traffic study done as part of the project. Um, it was done under the rules and guise of MODOT and the City of Wildwood whereby a scoping meeting was set up. Uh, basically, the impact is minimal increase in the vehicular delay or queues. The single lane roundabout, the existing roundabout at Manchester and Taylor functions has adequate capacity. Uh, there was no need for any additional direct access to Manchester Road, as you saw on the uh street pattern for East Gate Lane. We're using Taylor and Main Street. And there's no need or physical improvements um at the adjoining intersections. So replating the property um on this map outlined in purple is the nine point eight five acres. Uh, you see the full dedication of East Gate Lane from Manchester, I'm sorry, from Main Street down to the south, tying back in the tailor and then the configuration, which gives us three locks and then the single family. Your your, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Lewis Johnson.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. Lewis Johnson, one six five eight hundred is crossing drive, Ward eight. Uh, represent a house divided on this issue. I will tell you, my wife is uh very much opposed to this, more with the concerns about increased congestion in terms of traffic. I, from a business standpoint, understand the economic stimulus that would come from this development for our local businesses and how that would um improve their bottom line. So I I understand why we're looking at that. I I do, though, have concerns about the traffic and I guess I would dispute the report about the minimal congestion, especially at the intersection of Highway one hundred and Old Manchester. If you ever do drive that and if there's cars coming from Lake Chesterfield, the light changes and there's consistently a backup. So I I would ask that we really take a strong look at the traffic impact. Also, how are we going to maintain our roads and the degradation of that? So I really like planning and zoning to really speak to road maintenance, traffic congestion. So again, not necessarily against it. I understand why we're looking at it, but I think we really do need to address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Jenny Goski.
Thank you. I am Jenny Goski, the um president of the Wildwood Bits Association, and I am here today uh just to show that we are in favor and support of the Greenberg Development as it's going to bring uh more opportunity and revenue to our local businesses. And I do have a few emails I wanted to read uh from current members. So bear with me and I'm gonna try to talk quickly so we can get through this through five minutes. Okay. Center, we old twenty-seven ninety and the that was added and from Silver Spoon Ice Jones, property owner of Square and as a president of Wildwood for over nineteen years, we are all in favor of the proposed development. While we have enjoyed watching Wildwood grow since moving here in two thousand and fourteen, we feel there is still room for growth. That includes furthering the development of Wildwood Town Center. It would be nice for residents and visitors to have more places to visit. This development is a perfect mix of residential and commercial. From Julie Hefner, who is a local real estate agent, I'm very excited about the prospect of this new development. I think it'll provide much needed additional living and draw more business opportunity to the area. From Vicki Vicki Caspella from News Magazine. Uh, I firmly believe this is a positive mood for the businesses in Wildwood. To expand their footprint to more residents, expansion is key to the growth and strength of any business. I'm so glad WB is in coming involved with the new development. And then from Maureen from Pisaglias is I agree that any growth and development benefits us all as a whole in our community. So those are just the few of the emails we got back. We did get a few more, but again, I know we didn't have all night for me to speak. So thank you. Um, and I can't wait to hear how this goes.
Thank you. Do you have any other speaker cards? All right, so that concludes um that item. We have one other PZ twenty-one dash twenty-two, uh Ms. Elders, would you please read it?
PZ twenty-one dash twenty-two Greenberg Development Company LLC PO Box four eight six Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero three eight. A request for a change in zoning for a total of five properties that are currently designated by their amended C eight planned commercial district. Street addresses one six seven two zero and one six seven eight zero Main Street, St. Louis County locator numbers two three V three one zero five eight one and two three V three one zero five six one. C eight planned commercial district, street address one six seven zero zero Main Street, St. Louis County locator number two three V three one zero five seven zero and NU non-urban residence district. Street addresses one six seven nine five and one six seven two seven Manchester Road, St. Louis County locator numbers two four V six three zero three zero three and two four V six three zero three one two to the second amended C eight planned commercial district, street addresses one six seven two zero and one six seven eight zero Main Street, St. Louis County locator numbers two three V three one zero five eight one and two three V three one, two three V three one zero five six one. amended C eight planned commercial district and C eight planned commercial district, including a conditional use permit, CUP. Street addresses one six seven zero zero Main Street in one six seven nine five and one six seven two seven Manchester Road, St. Louis County locator numbers two three V three one zero five seven zero two four V six three zero three one two and two four V six three zero three zero three all in association with an overall tract of land that is eleven point eight acres, which would thereby authorize a mixed use development in the city's town center area such to be located on the west side of Taylor Road between Main Street and Manchester Road. Proposed uses all C two shopping district permitted and conditional uses a maximum maximum of one hundred eighty-nine multiple family units and a maximum of eleven single family detached dwellings on individual lots, along with public space, pickleball courts and others, stormwater management facilities and parking areas.
Mr. Vennett.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This particular item is the companion request to the regulating plan change. And for all intents and purposes, these are the mechanisms to accommodate the four story mixed use building that would be at the same location as prime place was planned. The multiple family complex with up to a hundred and eighty-nine total units. And then finally, the eleven single family detached dwellings on individual lots. I would note that as just a important item that when the town center plan was updated recently and concluded in two thousand and twenty-one, the decision was made to allow multiple family units in the downtown district, the land use category. But it would require a conditional use permit to be granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is why there is a conditional use permit associated with the overall rezonings to the amended or amended C eight planned commercial district or the C eight planned commercial district. So that's a key point and not something that typically the city council is asked to consider. Overall, the Planning and Zoning Commission did support the regulating plan change as noted, but also the rezonings associated with the existing properties to accommodate the preliminary plan. I would note that there are conditions associated with this particular recommendation from the commission that are intended to address some considerations relating to parking distribution. The overall what I would describe, a breakout of units, whether studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and equally important stormwater management, as we know, since the properties are part of Cox Creek. The conditions are intended to provide the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately City Council the protections it needs to ensure that this is integrated into the existing town center built environment, as well as, as men mentioned, provide needed rooftops for future economic development. If there are any questions after public comment, again, the department will be glad to try to respond to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we speak records?
Um, I have three speaker cards. They spoke at the prior public hearing, but I can say their name if they have anything else they need.
Can I call names if you want to speak further? Um, please approach the podium.
The first one is Edward Cone.
I just wanted to state that um both uh the items should be included, both my presentation and Mr. Stocks and the overall uh public. That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is George Stock. The last speaker card is Jenny Goski.
And she's not here. Okay. So that concludes that item. Um. That takes us to new business. And one question that I have for the council is whether there is anything, um we have, uh in the first readings, we have Bill twenty-seven ninety-one relating to our true up of the budget mid-year. Twenty-seven ninety-two, uh the West contracting uh contract I mentioned during um work session and that affects wards one and five. Uh, Bill twenty-seven ninety-three relating to uh release of escrow in Ward one for homesteads. Twenty-seven ninety-four affecting Ward eight that uh really relates to a uh adjusted lot. Twenty-seven ninety-five uh in words relating to Ward six relates to uh replating or boundary adjustment, rather. Twenty-seven ninety-six uh relates to an agreement uh for plans as to the SN log cabin. And that affects um Ward eight. And then finally, twenty-seven ninety-seven, which is uh resolving a previous encroachment onto St. Louis County Missouri Park property uh that affects Ward six. So my question with all respect to all those, is there any one of those that uh any of you would like to have handled separately? And if not, uh my suggestion would be to expedite the business of the council that we do them in unison. Councilmember Rambo.
Yes, sir.
And this does not relate to second readings. This is just
Okay, well, I I I thought you generally split them out if you wanted to do a second
We'll do second reading next. After it will handle this first and then we'll go there. That's all right. Same with you, Councilmember McCutcheon. Anyone else want to pull? All right. So with that, um, Ms. Eldridge, would you please, well, we need a motion. Is there a motion for uh the first reading of Bills twenty-seven ninety-one, twenty-seven ninety-two, twenty-seven ninety-three, twenty-seven ninety-four, twenty-seven ninety-five, twenty-seven ninety-six and twenty-seven ninety-seven? Made by Councilmember Flasher, seconded by Councilmember Nian. All in favor of the motion for first reading, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, Ms. Eldridge, please read Bills uh twenty-seven ninety-one, twenty-seven ninety-two, twenty-seven ninety-three, twenty-seven ninety-four, twenty-seven ninety-five, twenty-seven ninety-six and twenty-seven ninety-seven.
Bill number twenty-seven ninety-one in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, revising the budget for the city of Wildwood, Missouri for the fiscal year commencing on January one, two thousand and twenty-two and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven ninety-two in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract with NB West Contracting Company for the resurfacing of various public streets within the city, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven ninety-three in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a successor development to execute a successor developer agreement, including an accompanying cash deposit with the Homestead Estates at Wildwood Homeowners Association for the release of certain funds from the defaulted escrow accounts that are associated with this residential subdivision, thereby allowing for the city's reimbursement to this entity for its completion of street corrections as shown on the on the approved improvement plans, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven ninety-four in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plot for a listed law Road and Lindy Lane to be hereafter known as one seven zero one one Manchester Road subdivision, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven ninety-five in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the approval of a boundary adjustment plat for the consolidation of two lots that are part of the Hinkin Valley Estate subdivision located in the northwest quarter of of section twenty-one, Township forty-four North, Rain Street East of the Fifth Principal Meridian, specifically located at the terminus of Hinkin Valley Estates Drive and to be hereafter known as the consolidation of lots eight and nine of Hinkin Valley Estates re-subdivision, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven ninety-six in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Pattern Ives LLC for professional services relating to the development of design and engineering plans and bid specifications for the reassembly of the SN log cabin, which was donated by its family and will be located in the city's Village Green, consistent with the Historic Preservation Commission's report dated March twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven ninety-seven in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, reauthorizing a boundary adjustment plat between two properties under the same ownership to address a previous encroachment onto St. Louis County, Missouri Park property, all being part of US survey two zero three two, section fifteen, and a portion of Township forty-four North, Rain Street East, St. Louis County, Missouri, located located at the terminus of Stone Throw Drive and to be hereafter known as Lot Consolidation Plat of Lot Four, Stone Throw Equestrian Estates, plat book three four six, page three nine five, first reading.
Okay, thank you. And does any member does any member of the council have any questions for our city team relative to any of these uh bills? All right, now to second readings. I believe, first of all, our city interim city administrator has asked for a second reading on Bill twenty-seven ninety-one. And so at the moment, all I'm going to do, uh again, to expedite the business of the council is to uh get a read on which bills uh any of you would like to have read a second time.
Twenty-seven
Just one in order. That's okay.
I'm I'm jumping.
That's all right. That's all right. Uh. Uh, so Bill twenty-seven ninety-one is requested by our interim city administrator. And Bill uh twenty-seven ninety-two requested by Councilman McCutcheon. Bill twenty-seven ninety-three that I believe was requested by a homeowner previously, which relates to the homesteads escrow. Uh, Bill twenty-seven ninety-four uh relating to the lot issue, twenty-seven ninety-five leading to the boundary adjustment. And last, Bill twenty-seven ninety-seven relating to resolution, the encroachment. My question, and did I capture yours, Councilmember Rambo? Okay, perfect. Um, my question is to the council, would there be any objection to having a motion on the second read to as to whether to have a second reading on these bills done uh in unison as to all of them? Councilmember Bartoni.
I don't necessarily have objection, but I mean, you've been pretty good in the past about anything that requires the city investment or expenses. You've not done two readings in one night and I've respected that. And I think the council and the residents are used to that. Is there something different going on tonight that's time sensitive?
And are you talking about which bill are you talking about in particular?
Well, there's a couple that you just mentioned that does have a budgetary impact.
Well, the city, the the the, I think maybe there are two. So, well, the first one, which has been requested by interim city administrator, obviously, it's a budgetary impact.
Yeah.
But there's a reason.
Excluding that.
Okay, excluding that one. I think there's only one that's twenty-seven ninety-two. Um, and so, well, yeah, twenty-seven ninety-two, because I omitted twenty-seven ninety-six from the mix on this. The others have no budgetary implication. This is a decision of the council. If you want to pull that out and and we vote on, we we handle that separately as a motion um to for for a second reading this evening, we can do that. to for, for a second reading this evening, we can do that.
And like I said, I'm just, is there something time sensitive to it that we wouldn't go through our normal procedures?
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yeah, um, it's my belief that Mr. Brown was not opposed to that. It has got to do with resurfacing of streets and we will not be back here for another month. And this has been something that has been being been requested by those residents quite often. So that was the rationale for bringing it forward for second reading.
Why don't we do that separately? We'll do that separately. I mean, my policy on this has been to, unless there's objection, the unison thing doesn't work. I don't think it's a good idea. So.
And like I said, I don't have objection. It's just, it's been your policy and I was just curious.
It's, it's been my general recommendation, but the council actually decides this unless there's a tie vote. So you are correct, though, in, in my past expression and views on that. Okay, so we'll remove twenty seven ninety two. And, and I, I did not mention Bill twenty seven ninety six. So with respect to all of those that remain, is there any objection to handling the second readings of those in unison? Okay, there seem to be no objection to that. Is there a motion for the second reading of Bills twenty seven ninety one, twenty seven ninety three, twenty seven ninety four, twenty seven ninety five, and twenty seven ninety seven? Made by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg. All this takes a two third super majority vote, so we'll do a voice vote and see where that goes. All in favor of motion for second reading this evening of the bills indicated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the two thirds majority has been met. Ms. Eldridge, would you please read the bills again for a second time?
Bill number twenty seven ninety one in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri revising the budget for the city of Wildwood, Missouri for the fiscal year commencing on January one, twenty twenty two and ending on December thirty first, twenty twenty two, second reading. Bill number twenty seven ninety three in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute a successor developer agreement, including an accompanying cash deposit with the Homestead Estates at Wildwood Homeowners Association for the release of certain funds from the defaulted escrow accounts that are associated with this residential subdivision, thereby allowing for the city's reimbursement to this entity for its completion of street corrections as shown on the approved improvement plan, second reading. Bill number twenty seven ninety four in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing a minor subdivision plat for a one acre parcel of ground into three lots of record being adjusted Lot One of the Strucker Ammont subdivision. A boundary adjustment plat of attractive land in the southwest quarter of section one Township forty four North Rain Street East located on the northeast corner of Manchester Road in Lindy Lane and to be hereafter known as one seven zero one one Manchester Road subdivision, second reading. Bill number twenty seven ninety five in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the approval of a boundary adjustment plat for the consolidation of two lots that are part of the Hinkin Valley Estate subdivision located in the northwest quarter of section twenty one Township forty four North Range Three East of the fifth principal meridian specifically located at the terminus of Hinkin Valley Estates Drive. And to be hereafter known as the consolidation of lots eight and nine of Hinkin Valley Estates re-subdivision, second reading. Bill number twenty seven ninety seven in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri reauthorizing a boundary adjustment plat between two properties under the same ownership to address a previous encroachment onto St. Louis County Missouri Park property, all being part of US survey two zero three two, section fifteen in a portion of Township forty four North Rain Street East, St. Louis County, Missouri located at the terminus of Stone Throw Drive and to be hereafter known as Lot Consolidation Plat of Lot Four Stone Throw Equestrian Estates plat book three, four, six, page three, nine, five, second reading.
Thank you for that, Ms. Eldridge. Any questions or comments on any of the bills subject to second reading? All right, seeing none, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dodwell, my apology.
I would just like to make a comment regarding twenty seven ninety one and would like to thank the Director of Finance, Don Kaiser, and her staff for the detailed information that she provided to council with both the amounts saved by the city and the amounts that we have to make adjustments on. I believe from those efforts we will be reducing our costs to some extent. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty seven ninety one, twenty seven ninety three, twenty seven ninety four, twenty seven ninety five, and twenty seven ninety seven.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yep.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg. Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Jaxi. Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes. Sorry.
It's all right, Councilmember Galani. Okay, that takes us finishing up second readings, Bill twenty seven ninety two. Does anyone want to make a motion for a second reading of Bill twenty seven ninety two? Made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Marshall. Again, this will take two thirds vote to achieve. We'll do a voice vote again and see where that goes. All in favor of a motion for sec, the motion for second reading of Bill twenty seven ninety two this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have exceeded the two thirds majority required. Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty seven ninety two a second time.
Bill number twenty seven ninety two in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract with NB West Contracting Company for the resurfacing of various public streets within the city, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications, second reading.
Thank you. Any comments or questions or Mr. Brown, anything you want to mention relative to the bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that the plan is to resurface the street, do the project during the summer months, hopefully when the school is out of session. So if there's any other questions from the council, I'll entertain them at this time, but other than that, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty seven ninety two.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano. Councilmember Bros. Oops, sorry. Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Jaxi. Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. So that takes us to Bill twenty seven ninety eight, which has been provided by the department because the department did indicate or has indicated it supports the, the change to the solar rules as proposed by Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I got it mixed up. My apology. No wonder you're looking at me. Okay, so we next have Bill twenty seven ninety eight, which relates to the, so I guess we reverse this from the hearing for some reason. All right, to the multifamily development in town center. Mr. Bennett, anything you want to mention relative to that?
Now, again, Mayor, if there are any questions on the, on the part of city council, I'll be glad to try to address them along with Mr. Newberry and Ms. Ripeto.
Any questions, Councilmember Garitano?
Your, thank you. Director Vunich, do you have a, just maybe a couple of quick questions for you? You heard the concern tonight just about that traffic concerns, and I just wanted to make sure we're taking the steps to address those traffic concerns. Could you, could you address that question?
Well, certainly, Mr. Garitano. First and foremost, we did require a traffic impact study of the development and the surrounding roadway system. That traffic impact study was done by Lockmuir and Associates, a well-known firm and one that the city has used on occasion for its traffic analysis and studies. And in conjunction with that, Mr. Brown, our Director of Public Works is well versed in traffic. And so all of that taken together, we feel comfortable that if there are issues that arise as we go through the site development plan, they can be addressed.
Same top.
The ordinance does contain the general language for the assessment of the traffic generation assessment fee. But as part of the dedication and gift of this particular property where City Hall is located, there was a resolution passed by City Council that credited a certain amount of those fees. That final number has not yet been determined, but obviously there is the provision to allow it within the context of that resolution and what's been credited to date.
And then again, just a couple more quick questions here. Director Vunich, as part of this rezoning for the parcel of land that is on the corner of the north side of Manchester Road and Taylor Road. You mentioned that's workplace prior to obviously this proposal coming forward. So workplace is a form of commercial. Just to, for my recollection, the property that's on the south side of Manchester that runs parallel, is that workplace or is that a different, which land uses that?
It is a workplace district, although the zoning designation is R three, which is a residential district. But it was part of a PEU approved by the St. Louis County Council that basically allowed all of the units in the seven villages of Cherry Hills, and the attempt was to have a small commercial center at the front. Obviously, that's not come to fruition. And from the perspective of the department, we probably now should be considering changing that workplace to district designation to probably something that's not.
You read my mind. That was going to be my, I guess, my follow up to that because I think that's the main concern for me, being from Ward eight, is those residents there at Oak Park right there. I believe it's Arlington Terrace. That's right there. They're very adjacent in that parcel of land. I think it's a big question mark for a lot of people. So seeing that now we'll have residential on the north side of Manchester makes me think that now with residential now on three sides of that parcel, even though it's not related to this tonight, it seems like it probably would start to fit in more like some kind of low impact use residential type use in the future, if something should come about. So.
If we follow the town center plan, it generally discourages breaking land use at the street and having complementary or the same land use on each others, on of each side of the street. So as I say, I think the next step, if this were to proceed forward, this project that we should probably investigate a change to that regulating plan designation.
Okay, yeah, we strongly support that because I think those folks there would rather have that buffer. You know, as you get closer to the homes of the existing neighborhood.
Understood.
To have that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yeah, I, I asked both these questions in committee and, and there's, there's been no Cernible movement, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask them now. So I so if it's not, forgive me, but I will. The first one is those homes that, that, that Mr. Garitano was just discussing. Any, that, that's, that's tailor made for future sound complaints. If we don't do it right, you may, you, you explained thoroughly why there were going to be homes there instead of something else. But we, we did, we talked about a berm and so forth, and all of that should be on the developer and it should be up to our current standard for noise mitigation, and it should be aesthetically pleasing from the road. I don't want to, I don't want to look at a dam along Manchester because we cheeped out on, on the sound mitigation. Have you addressed that at all, or is this the appropriate, proper time to, to, to be concerned with it, or will that happen later?
From the perspective of the department, existing conditions in the proposed bill, I think, address that. And when the site development plan is submitted, it will be the intent not only to look at the berm landscaping and other sound mitigation, but also when the actual units, the single family detached dwellings are submitted to Architectural Review Board. The department will be front and center asking that there be steps taken in terms of building the materials to mitigate sound as well.
Great. Okay, so the other question is similar in nature. We talked about the topology being favorable for a two-story parking garage because I'm concerned with folks parking along Main Street to access their apartments and sucking up those spaces that are useful for or Benidettos and, and those kinds of things. Is that sort of the same thing? You'll keep an eye on it and, and we'll figure it out later?
When the department was presenting on the first public hearing, it noted that there still are some, a couple outstanding issues about parking distribution. And over the course of time, I've been getting kind of different answers to the question about how that southern end of the apartment building is going to be utilized for parking or not. At first, it was going to be an open air structure tucked underneath the building, given the grade change. Tonight, I didn't hear that. So certainly parking distribution is a key component. And I will note, though, that in this particular instance, the developer has parked closer to two per unit than not, than most any than any of the others that have looked at that site over the course of time, where it's something like one point eight units per one point eight spaces. Yeah, per unit. And we also already have a cross parking agreement with the theater. As you know, the theater opened with ten screens at ninety nine or a hundred seats per screen. They have that number of seats in the theater. So we do have excess parking there. We created the cross parking agreement with Prime Place. So between it all, I think we have ample parking. I'm just concerned about the distribution and just how it looks on the surface.
Yeah, and I'd love to make sure we have ample parking for town, for the, the Village Green, because that's, that's what I'm really worried about.
Understood.
Is, is, is one point seven per unit, is that like roughly the, the, the the normal number of spaces per unit in apartment buildings like this?
Apartment buildings, in my opinion, are notoriously underparked.
That's what I thought. Yes.
In some instances, it's one per unit, and if you get lucky, it's one point five per unit.
Okay, so one point seven is better, but it may not be sufficient.
Actually, I think it'll work, given what we have in town center. Again, just the cross parking with the theater. The staging relative to the commercial uses and some on-street parking. And certainly, if it becomes an issue, we can designate parking, we can start designating parking for timeframes, so like no overnight parking, those kinds of things. So we can control what happens on Main Street in terms of the parking use.
Okay, everybody's tired and I don't want to beat this one to death. I, I, I will just keep it.
Yes, and that's the intent, I believe, of the Department of Public Works as well as Department.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Well, first off, we, we brought a potential possibility for a park in Ward eight with that extra spot there on the roundabout on the south side of Manchester. So just wanted to drop that little nugget. And then the other thing is, are we going to have commitment from the developers that they will be reporting to council at each of our meetings, where they stand, what's been completed on their preparations for this, what they're still needing from the city council, because in Prime Place, there were huge gaps where we're guessing is anything ever going to be built there? And I think if we need to, if, if they want this to be a complimentary relationship with the city, then we need to get updates from them on a monthly basis on what steps they've taken, what tasks they've gone through. So we see things moving instead of sitting.
They're indicating yes.
I, I see their heads nodding, so I'll report that through the recording here that they're nodding yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Bartoni.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. If let's just say that unfortunately, this development never happens. Would the rezoning from Workplace District to Neighborhood General District where those eleven houses are at, would that go back or would that still, would that stay in place?
The change in the regulating plan designation would stay in place, so it would take an affirmative action of the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to revert.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Edens.
Councilmember Bartoni and I must share one brain tonight. That was my first question, whether or not the CUP land use category was permanent with the land or whether it was associated with a specific site development plan. That being said, generally speaking, I, I, I don't have as many major concerns. I, I certainly think we could address the timing on stoplights if, if traffic becomes an issue. We're doing the best that we can on parking, although I don't anticipate a total lack of problems. What I have seen on council in my time is generally speaking, when you change an area from commercial or, or another or, or another type of use like workplace, make it primarily or only a residential area, it gets built. A few years go by, council members change, the collective knowledge of this institutional body changes with it. And then that, that new neighborhood comes and when something else is proposed says, wait a minute, I'm residential and I don't want to ever see anything commercial or workplace near me because that's not the, you know, vibe I bought into regardless of the fact that it was zoned like that prior. And, and certainly when they bought the house. Uh, so what I've seen in, in my time on council is that, that domino effect where we lose the, the land that we have that could entirely be commercial. So while I understand.
So what, so debate is after the second reading?
I'm getting ready to ask a question. Okay. So in the past, when this has come up, we've had our economic development manager who was able to make a statement. So I'm referring to, uh, the Bosworth property that failed, although I previously supported it. And the thought being at the time that changing this area to, to residential was necessary to improve the foot traffic and that we owned enough commercial land as a city. I was hoping that our interim city administrator who also serves as our economic development manager could speak to this issue.
Yeah, not a problem. I appreciate that, Councilmember Edens. And at this point, I do believe, I understand the concern that comes in there. Say they get it developed and that 11, that 11 town, town home stretch does not get purchased. I have spoken with Mr. Cohen pretty extensively and he, he has shown some pretty strong indications that they will get bought up, just based off the market interest. Uh, so in this case particularly, um, I do believe that it would be okay to go ahead and move forward with that piece. But when it comes to, uh, you know, if, if there was different circumstances around it, I would be a little bit more concerned just because like you said, if something isn't built, then you're left there with residential when you could have had commercial. And that being said too, it would be nice to have some kind of commercial development there, but I do see that with the development that has been proposed today. The, uh, if you're looking at the map, the only true retail that's coming with this development is on, is a, is affronting Main Street. So you're going to see that, that other building that will have the majority of the rental units on the first floor will have most of the amenities. So if say there were some, you know, small strip store that was located within that area. Uh, if you skirt back a little bit, like as we're discussing 11 townhomes. Personally, with my experience talking with developers at this time, there's no one that would be willing to invest in just a retail plaza there. Maybe it would be something that would be mixed use. Just like Mr. Cohen is presenting here tonight, but at this time, I think this is, uh, it's, it's, this is going to create and make this development complete. And I, I would say that this is a particular case where I would support it. But I do agree with your sentiment.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. In the past, we've had residents that have come up and, and voiced their opinion that these types of land use changes don't support the master plan. I think what I've heard here tonight is that it, it helps make the master plan's vision possible. And this is also about a trust relationship that we've built over the years with Mr. Cohen, who has done good work in the past and has also served the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilor McCutcheon.
Yeah, um, these are in the form of a question that you can respond to. My council member next to me brought up two points that I'm very concerned about. One is parking. Um, and the other one is definitely sound mitigation. You address those. I am still not, um, I'm still very concerned that the parking spots are not adequate. When you start talking about less than two spots for 189 units. You know, even though we have an agreement right now to use extended parking next to the theater, doesn't mean that's going to be impertuity. And so the other thing with the parking spots is that they don't seem to be screened. I mean, we're going to drive down the street and that's a lot of what we're going to see are parking spots, not a lot of green space. Um, so I don't know if there is a way to kind of screen some of those spaces and then maybe, you know, utilize other greenery to make that look less than commercial, basically. Uh, my other concern is that we do have a lot of open commercial space and we're going to be and three stories tall. I mean, that was our original.
So do you have questions?
Yeah. So can you address those concerns?
Well, with regards to the screening of visible parking areas or parking spaces, we've already talked to the developer and the developer's engineer, and there will be a requirement for a garden wall similar to what you see at Wildwood Square and then complemented by landscaping. So the intent is at least from Taylor Road, Main Street and Manchester Road, you will not see a field of parking. And if you do, it should be just a glimpse and much of it covered with landscaping, either through islands, et cetera. In terms of the additional commercial, we're hoping that between the four-story building where the commercial will be housed, the 189 units, that's the multiple family complex and the single family detached, that they'll actually strengthen the downtown district and bring greater interest. When we started Town Center, the commercial was far flung between what we called commercial now downtown workplace and neighborhood center. It was just too much, given what my opinion is, the competing interest in the Chesterfield Valley and Eureka, and then east of us on Manchester Road. But when we create the market itself by the residential units, I think we're finding a, a greater path of success. Again, in the downtown district, it's the only location where we accommodate the fifth story as we did with Prime Place. And collectively, I think when we get to that point, you'll be able to see a rendering that shows that it's in context and won't look out of place. I think the built environment in the downtown district can accommodate.
Okay, thank you. So this bill is here for first reading. Is there a motion for the first reading of Bill 2798? Leave it, Councilmember Nian, seconded by Councilmember Clark. All in favor of the motion for first reading of Bill 2798, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Sorry, Councilmember Galati, any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Elders, please read Bill 2798 a first time.
Bill number 2798, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, approving the rezoning of five properties to the amended C8 planned commercial district and C8 planned commercial district along with a conditional use permit CUP to accommodate a mixed-use development, which includes up to 11 single-family dwellings on individual lots, 189 multiple-family units and a combination of structures and a four-story commercial slash residential building, which is consistent with the Planning and Zoning Commission set forth in its letter of recommendations dated April 3, 2023.
Thank you. So we've had lots of discussion and questions on this. I believe the petitioner asked for a second reading. Is there any objection on the part of the department to that?
Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I've made a couple errors in the context of the permitted uses and I don't know how to address them without having a delay.
Very well.
I apologize to all, but there was a condition that's been part of the permitted uses since day one. It was caught on Saturday. And the bill was already posted, so I just don't know how to address it.
It is what it is. Thank you. All right. So that bill will be on our agenda for the next meeting. That takes us to Bill 2799. I was getting jumped to that earlier. I have something I want to just throw out as an option for the council on this. And, and I came up with this tonight, having heard the testimony that we had, which I appreciate each of them. You know, giving us their input and the emails that we got and so forth. And what I came to conclusion of is that it essentially mirrors exactly the same data from public participation that we got at the planning and zoning meeting, meaning that the only speakers that we heard from, we've heard from since this started and that we at Planning and Zoning heard from were either people who worked in the industry or people who wanted to get solar panels on their homes or subdivision trustees who did not want that to occur. So in other words, all of each one of those categories, regardless of what you agree with or don't agree with, comes with it potentially inherent bias. And to say it conversely, what we didn't hear from tonight, and we haven't heard from, to my knowledge, at Planning and Zoning, is what I would call unadulterated. Someone with no skin in the game, but they think about this. And this is obviously a big issue for our city. And I have no doubt that each of us have our own subjective views on it. We wouldn't be human if we didn't. But what I'm proposing, I guess, I want to ask you if you, what you think of this as an option, uh, is what if we get that unadulterated and, and unbiased data by doing a survey of our residents and a survey of subdivision trustees in particular? Because I think that we are all here ultimately to want to do what our residents want us to do and to put other subjective interests aside. And I think that it would certainly do that. And in connection with it, once we, if we, if we go down the road of having a survey, we could also ask the department, when that data is presented to the council, to include its own unadulterated review of things like affect, if any, on fair market value. Uh, whether there are companies in St. Louis County that do in fact install integrated solar panels and at what cost? We had testimony tonight that there aren't any. Well, my understanding is there are at least two. So I think if you like this idea, the approach would be to accomplish two things. Number one, to give the council and me unbiased opinion from our residents as to what they think about it. And number two, to hopefully clear up some of the he said, she said, yes, it does, no, it information that quite you know, the, the survey questions itself, we all know those are important. So I would suggest that before the survey, if you want to do this, before the survey is presented to anyone, that the council looks at those questions and makes sure that you're comfortable with them so that you don't think that, that they are anything other than looking to get the data. So before we get to the bill, my question is, what do you think of that idea? Councilor Edens.
All right. I like the idea of a general survey with a couple of, of caveats. I am, and, and, and I will say this, and I think you would probably all agree, you've heard from more Ward two residents than any other ward. And we have heard from more Ward two residents than, than you all have. Uh, so this is not something that, that we take lightly at all. My, my thought would be is to just do, you know, a general survey where any resident can answer rather than separately reaching out to HOA representatives because here's why. Um, I am very conscious of the fact that on this regulation, we're a separate political subdivision and we do have a state law that prohibits these HOAs from regulating front-facing panels in a certain way. However, their opinion is nice. I, I really want to make sure that that's not overstated or given more influence than it legally should because this is a, this is a different issue than, than what we normally deal with. Um, and then that means that that HOA person would essentially be answering twice. They would be going online to the survey, answering as a resident and then answering again.
No, no. We, we're going to make sure this guy knows how to make sure surveys don't get duplicitous responses, number one. Number two, uh, the law, it is checked with the city attorney, does not prohibit subdivision trustees from answering questions about this. They're not enforcing anything. They're answering questions. Number, number three, they are arguably the step next to their residence between us and them. And I think in general, having served in that capacity for a number of years, I think subdivision trustees know their residents probably better than we do. Number four, even if I'm wrong on all of that, the data can, you, you as councilmembers can, can give the weight to whatever answer of the residents or answer of subdivision trustees you want. If you don't like, you don't think the subdivision trustees answer on it has any bearing, then don't consider it. But at least we would have that information from trustees that are not directly affected by something present before the city wanting solar panels.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I'm totally aware that they are legally allowed to answer questions. I just don't want them to have, you know, I, I there's what, two, two and a half words that represent areas that also have no HOA trustees as well. So I, I just don't, I just don't want a particular group of people dominating the decision when there is a way for them to answer as a regular constituent as well.
Make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. Um, and then after that, I, I would love to share what our residents told us as well. I know there was a question um, from Councilmember Rambo earlier about the kind of overall feedback and, and I would love to do that on the main motion.
Well, I'm just trying to gauge whether you think this is a good idea. Councilor McCutcheon.
So I don't know if I was not filing correctly or what. So does this survey going out to all residents as well?
We would probably, given that I'm not an expert on surveys, at the next council meeting, have the city administrator or the Department of Planning come back to the council with its line by line one pager on how the survey is going to be done, who it's going to, how to eliminate redundancies, those kinds of things. So the council could express its opinion on all those things before it gets done. But the objective is, I'm just looking for a conceptual, without getting into the weeds on this at this point. We'll have plenty of time to do that. The, the concept is to get unbiased, unadulterated resident opinions that I don't know that we have to the degree we may need. Councilor Clark.
Yeah, I like this idea because we can step back and do like a more exegetical kind of approach. Look at it and pull in all of the, the pros and the cons that we see from the, the residents. And we can look at them and have some data to, to assess instead of just, you know, a lot of it, there's a lot of passion with this and a lot of opinions. So to step back and look at the data instead of what I would like, or, you know, I can't have a, a solar panels on my house because of, I'd have to cut down trees. But so I want to be able to base this on the data and not just on what my feeling is.
Okay, thank you. Is there any objection to the, Councilmember Ottenberg?
No, I was just going to say I would go along with Councilmember Clark. I think it's very important that we get some unbiased information regarding the impact solar panels have on property values, simply because I hear some people say they negatively impact the value of property and other people say they positively impact the value of property. And at the end of the day, when we take a vote on this legislation, we're going to have to be able to go out and talk to our constituents and explain to them why we voted the way we did. And it would be nice to have that backup information in our pockets when we do that.
Okay. Councilmember Bartoni.
So I did, I got two comments to make. One, I, I would just caution everybody how much weight you put on this actual survey. I mean, it'll be interesting material and the look at, but you know, seven, eight years ago, if we would have done a survey on brightly, brightly, but have never gotten built. You know, so I would be just kind of cautious with everybody on the development or the, what we actually see. That being said, we have at least two residents that I know of, and there might be more that have been waiting way too long for a CUP to be approved. And this is just going to delay that even longer. And I would rather staff and commission P and Z to take that into consideration and at least get those things approved in the meantime.
Mr. Bartoni, unfortunately, a couple of those have recommendations from the department that are, do not support the grand, you know, the conditional use permit. And we were holding off thinking that with the new regulations that might change, it might not, but we didn't want to necessarily, let's say poison the well before we got to the end of the discussion.
Councilor Dodwell.
I'd like to make a motion that we complete a survey as outlined by the mayor ASAP with reporting back to the council before our June meeting if possible, but.
Okay, thank you. And to Councilmember Bartoni's point, Joe or Tom? So it comes back to the council and assuming the council gives input, the survey's developed, it's, it's out there. How long reasonably do you think it would be before we would get, under the quickest scenario, that data back to the council? 30 days, 60 days, hopefully no longer than 60?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would assume depending on how many residents you're looking to respond. We have 35,000 residents here to be statistically significant. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would assume, depending on how many residents you're looking to respond, we have thirty five thousand residents here. To be statistically significant, it should be around a thousand responses. But if we're okay with just getting, you know, five hundred, it would probably take thirty to sixty days to get that amount of responses. But that being said, if we use all the tools at our disposal, I think we can maybe.
So when you come back with your report, whomever does that, if you could just give us obviously that timeline and and hopefully it'll be as expeditious as possible.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fleischer.
I just want to make a recommendation that the survey isn't like really long. I feel like a shorter survey, they you might actually get a response that's worthwhile.
I think we've got probably two up to five questions on it at max. So so we have, we have a Councilmember Ottenberg.
I'd like to second the motion made by Ms. Dodwell to proceed with the survey.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the motion? The city attorney has suggested that this needs to actually be, my apology, a motion to postpone, subject to getting the survey data back to the council. Given that the motion has been made and seconded, it needs to be a unanimous decision of the council that you're comfortable with that being the wording. Is there any objection to that being the wording in the motion by any member of the council? Okay, all in favor of the motion as revised, please.
So since this is now a postponement and not a separate motion, after this vote happens, I won't be able to make the other comments that I was going to make. So
The the chair will let you make your comments.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Okay, thank you to the chair. So I I wanted to to tell you kind of what we've heard and also because what I think is going to happen is in our effort to get unbiased information, we are still going to get the outliers that care the most. And I say this because when Dawn and I got calls, the timing indicated that our personal numbers went out on either a message or an email because they would come in like groups of ten, so much so that I couldn't get off the phone with one before I had four voicemails, and then there would be a gap. So I think what's going to happen is with a subdivision like Windcrest that at all, you know, a a at least fifty percent of that neighborhood will respond. And so we are, we're going to automatically solicit those that have been, I guess, encouraged to respond. I I I really, I I really do. But that's it's still the only way to to try to do it. So
We will find a way to parse it so that because the whole purpose of this, in my mind, is to get at unbiased.
So if they could provide their address and we could see the breakdown of the areas.
With all due respect, let's get the report and we can tweak it when we get it.
Okay. So I I did want to share some of the opinions that we got so that that you guys kind of understand what we heard. So most of these comments were in response to the two homes in Windcrest up for review of the receive and file. And some of the comments also pertain to the the current legislation on the floor, but but all nonetheless applied. So the the biggest thing that I I heard was that we don't want to look at front facing. I also heard, and I was, so I'm going to go through the cons first. I also heard that it was bad for the environment. I was a little surprised by this. It felt like with some of the comments that the entire solar industry was on trial rather than a conversation about front facing versus rear facing. Because the same individuals that told me they had these concerns would also tell me in the conversation they were okay with rear facing.
So Missy, how much do you have there? Because maybe an email to the council that summarizes all those, given that it's nine thirty, Mike.
And and I I realize it's late. I just think it's an important conversation to have in in the public. I mean, people need to know that that their their calls matter.
So how would you summarize all of them in a nutshell?
Yeah, I would. I would say that the vast majority of complaints were were what I would, you know, what we call NMB, not in my backyard, meaning that if the the concern was not equal to the front as the rear. There were some good comments that I did agree with concerning a streamlined process board of adjustment review. The vast majority of comments that I heard were from Windcrest. The pros were the exact opposite, right? We like the way it looks. It's better for the environment, personal property rights versus the the right not to look at it. Grid stress, et et cetera, et cetera. But but just again, to summarize, it was I I don't want to see this in my neighborhood. I don't look at it.
Okay, thank you. Moving next to Resolution twenty twenty three dash nine. It's before the council and it concerns all wards in regard to updating audio equipment. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash nine made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon? Ms. Elders, would you please read Resolution twenty twenty three dash nine?
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with TSI Global Companies LLC for the purchase, delivery and installation of audio equipment in the community room of the Wildwood Municipal Building.
Okay, thank you. Anything you want to mention on this? City admin interim city administrator, Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quick, I know we're burning the candles here, but just wanted to say that Travis and I wanted to give a little shout out to Travis. We had reached out to many vendors about this specific issue to create a Zoom capable community room. And we had come across this wonderful company, TSI Global Companies, and they were able to provide us with a amazing proposal that's going to be able to pretty much turn our any meeting that we'd like into the community room. And they said they could get it done pretty quickly as well. So we if passed tonight, we could probably have this done and have meetings in there sometime in early July. I'm also available for any questions at this time. Thank you.
So much. Any questions for the interim city administrator? Councilmember Dodwell.
I just wanted to let council know in my prior career, I have worked with TSI before. They are a very reputable company. I do trust what they say. I've seen installations that they've done similar to this in other organizations, and I think they'll be just fine.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash nine? Please say aye.
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Any extensions? Resolution is adopted. Moving next, our last one, Resolution twenty twenty three dash ten. This relates to memorandum of understanding with Republic Services and Gateway Disposal. This comes from our Administration Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash ten made by Councilmember Hopper, seconded by Councilmember Clark? Ms. Elders, please read Resolution twenty twenty three dash ten.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash ten, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of a memorandum of understanding with Allied Services LLC doing business as Republic Services of Bridgestone and Gateway Disposal LLC for solid waste collection and disposal services.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, do you have anything you want to add or mention relative to this resolution?
Thank you, Mayor Ballin. Not in particular, I know interim city administrator Tom Lee and myself have been really working hard on on pulling this together for you tonight. So there's been a lot of effort that's gone into this. It is an important decision that affects our residents. And I think the one thing we heard was it was very important to provide waste haulers that we are confident in that can get the job done well and effectively for our residents. So with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Councilmember Dodwell.
The pain in your side has returned.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Um, I had sent an email to Mr. Brown earlier today, just requesting the duration of this memorandum of understanding ends in the middle of June. At least that's the way it's written of twenty twenty three, which is this year. So I assume we're taking on a full contract after that point. And this is a stop cap.
Yep.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that the residents knew that.
And you are never a pain on the left side. Okay, so no further discussion. All in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash ten? Please say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Resolution is adopted. We have no consent agenda. Anything under miscellaneous? Councilmember Edens?
Yeah, I I I just want to say I I know this was a late meeting. I if if there's not enough time to discuss residents' thoughts on an issue, then we'll have an extra meeting because this is one of the two topics that I've gotten the most complaints about. This is a big issue, and to not have time and to be interrupted is just I I I don't appreciate it.
Well, Councilmember Edens, under the rules, you actually did not have the ability to do that, and I extended that to you as a courtesy. There will be plenty of time to do it. If you want to go into the litany of comments at this point, please do so. Thank you. Anything else under miscellaneous? All right, that takes us to an adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Ottenberg makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, non debatable motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?